Good evening, everybody. Like what you said, regular meeting at the Rome City School District for vacation. The date is December twenty second, twenty twenty one, the time is six P M. These writers.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is to approve the minutes of regular meetings of December ninth, twenty twenty one. Mr. Malachi.
Second.
Mr. Hannity, any discussion? Mr. Say aye.
Aye. Stay. Oh, I wasn't here.
One of them. Mr. Blake, any additions or additions?
Just one addition, the Capitol Project presentation was left off the work studies somehow. So that is tonight, we have our architects and construction management firm and fiscal advisors here to discuss that with us in a little bit.
Thank you. reported the superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We did put a updated attendance report for the board in front of you. We've been through this twice now. We didn't want to, I didn't put on the work study question piece, but you can just take a look at the data and the numbers. No real changes, nothing really differently than we had the past couple of presentations. Couple of updates, test to stay program, the principals and I and some nurses met with the county earlier this week or last week on that. We're still working through some file details. There are some things with it that I would call hoops to jump through that makes it less enticing or encouraging to utilize than one might initially seem. Families have to agree to buy into it. There's daily testing. Kids have to test at home before they come to school. The families need to provide evidence of that test, either picture or video. It is only good for exposures that happen at school. So if you come down with COVID outside of school or you're exposed outside of school, you're not allowed to test to stay. It's only if you've been exposed in school as a result. Does not apply to exposures that happen at lunch or during high risk sports. There's a lot of caveats to it that that really, if you boil it down, it really is going to affect very few students. But nonetheless, we're continuing to investigate and wait and see what the county's final plan is. I can tell you in discussion with some of my colleagues, different districts, superintendents have been told different things about what the process will look like for their district. So I'm waiting to kind of get final word from the county. Right now we are securing tests. Those are free from the state for families that at home test that you're buying in the drug stores now. Those will be supplied free to families. So if a family does want to test to stay, the biggest hurdle for them really is they have to do that at home prior to the kid getting on the bus to coming to school and finding evidence of that to the school before that happens. So we'll have more information early January when the county has their information. Other big news that happened yesterday and today, if you saw the state education department canceled the January renews exams for next January. They have yet to, well, they don't get to make the decision. They are submitting a petition or filing to the state board of regents to allow a waiver for those exams, similar how they've done in the past couple of exam cycles. So the board of regents will eventually make a decision of whether or not students that would have been seating for those exams get a waiver and exemption from those January exams. We don't have information on that yet. What we do have information on is the state office of state aid planning today sent out a memo notifying school districts that they expect all students to be in classes as a regular school day during those days where they normally would not have gone to school. Districts can choose to not send kids to school that day, but you will be doctor state aid payments for those days because technically they should be in school now. There's no regions exams to exempt them. So I think most people assume that was going to happen anyways, but they made it official pretty quick that kids will be in school and we'll make sure that we get that information out. Also happening today, the New York State Education Department petitioned the United States Department of Education for school accountability relief for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year. So essentially what they're saying is all of the different measures that the state is responsible for developing and determining school accountability doesn't exist right now and it's unfair to classify a school as a targeted and needed improvement school or CSI school, whatever their different designations are. So the state has set the petition to the federal government, asking them to either waive those accountability measures and and tags, if you will, for the upcoming school year or and reset the bar or not. So I'm sure there'll be more information for that coming, but that is kind of a a big ticket item that that doesn't happen very often. And quite frankly, I'm surprised it took this long for them to do that, considering that all of the assessments that are used to identify and classify schools have not been offered for two years now. So there really is no basis for them to determine that on. I'll keep you updated as we get through that. Student recognitions, we had a great week last week. Three RFA students I recognize tonight versus Lauren Dorfman. She's a senior RFA. She's been nominated by Claudia Tenney for three of the four service academies. It's a pretty big deal to get nominated for one service academy, but she was nominated to attend all the air force, the Navy and West Point undecided as of right now where she plans on attending, but we do know she will be going into a service academy. Congratulations to Lauren. That's a huge accomplishment and very proud of you. Kaden Metcalf, RFA senior was inducted to the Great American Rivalry Series Hall of Fame team. There are twenty high school seniors in the entire country inducted to that honor. This is the second year that the program has happened. Last year was inaugural classes, the second class. Proud to say RFA has a student elected into each of the first two classes. I don't know if any other school district in the country has been able to say that, but congratulations to Kaden, very excited for him, a great honor. And then on the heels of that, our very own Alana Okavisi over here was nominated, one of twenty five students in the state of New York nominated for the Presidential Scholar Award coming out of Washington DC. So we'll continue to follow your path. You probably know more about what happens next than I do, but congratulations to you, one of twenty five students in the state nominated for that prestigious honor. And that I believe goes down to the federal government at this point in time, right? It's the Washington DC thing.
Based on what I've read, yes.
Yes, yeah, well, congratulations. All three students for representing the community in the school in such a great way. Final thing I have tonight is just a sincere thank you for our entire staff, our families, our students, the four months that we've been in session here to get to this break have been grueling, to say the least. I can't thank the work of our staff enough to kind of keep schools open at all costs. They've worked very hard covering each other's backs, covering classes, pretty much doing everything they possibly can. Our student body has also been wonderful in doing what they can to make sure that they're complying and following whatever rules that they come down, whether we agree with them or disagree with them. For the most part, we have worked together here in this community to do what we have to do to kind of keep schools open. I know that families are at their wit's end when you get the phone call for the second, third, fourth, fifth time that your kid's quarantined or has a low risk exposure or and it gets confusing, rules might change from time to time, but I want to thank everybody for their efforts and their work the past four months. I wish I could tell you that I knew what twenty twenty two would bring. I'm just crossing my fingers that in the next week and a half that nothing major changes. And we don't get any curveballs going into January third, but we've been through this for almost two years now, and I think that's a big ask to hope that we don't get a curveball. So cross your fingers, let's just hope that January third, if we're going to get a curveball, let's hope it happens after January third. So thank you to our entire community for everything they've done these four months. With that, turning back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Our student board member report.
All right. So the past three days, we had a spirit week and I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated in that. Monday was ugly sweater day, Tuesday was winter wonderland, and then today was flannel day. If you want to see any of those pictures, we highlighted some students who submitted pictures on the RFA underscore staff Instagram page. Some things I mentioned in our past meeting, we talked about the musical. They're going to announce the musical at the cabaret, which will be on January eighth, and the cabaret is when alumni from RFA who are in any musical production come back to staying with current students. So it's a really nice thing that RFA puts on. Another thing we're trying to plan going off of music is our open mic night. We had some bumps in the road trying to plan that. So hopefully starting up in January, we can get more finalized plans. The seniors won the window painting at the Rome Memorial Hospital. So thank you again to all the students for all the grace who did that. That was a really nice feeling and hopefully we can continue to do it at the hospital this year and keep it consistent. Um, we turned in for staff, at least our holiday cards went mostly to the grand nursing home and our cans went to the Salvation Army on Dominic Street and Saint Joseph's Church and Lee. So that is what's going on in RFA as of right now.
Thank you, Alana.
Thank you.
How you do.
Okay, if I entertain changing our agenda a little bit, so we do our commendation right now before the Capitol project. And hold the time, we'll be right after. Commendations. Revolution commendations, whereas the Board of Education of the Rome City School District encourages community partnerships and support for students themselves whenever possible, and whereas Frankie Bardino had been instrumental in the development and operations the New York State Mentoring Program for Rome City School District students and community members. And whereas Frankie of our Dino has brought recognition and credit to himself, our community and in turn the Rome City School District now therefore be resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools will hereby command and thank Frankie Bardino was demonstrated unconditional support for our students and community. And be a further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Education be and hereby is directed to spread this resolution on the minutes of tonight's meeting. I move the resolution. Chairman Davis, any discussion?
I would just like to thank Frank for everything he's done over the past several years and thank you for being here tonight, Frank. I miss you. It's been a long time since I got in the lay eyes on you. Frank has the word instrumental is not strong enough for the what he has done for the children of our district and for the community in general with the mentoring program. He brought this to the district several years ago as really as a tiny vision and a blossom is something that we were able to offer for many, many kids and and adults that that may be connected to those kids. So I can't say enough positive things for what Frank has done. And really thank you for everything you you did to get that mentoring program off the ground. And I'm very hopeful that in the near future, we'll get on the other side of this COVID thing and be able to kickstart that thing again. So thank you, sir.
I think also thank the chamber for being part of this whole program too. Good job. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, what you carry, congratulations. Yes.
This girl, we took you say something quick before we ask Frank.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. It's truly an honor to be here tonight, representing the chamber and to recognize Frankie Bardino for his exceptional leadership and dedicated service in support of the Rome Mentoring Program. Rome Chamber is very proud of the collaborations that it's had with the school district, and this is one of the phenomenal programs that Frank has led very well. I was thinking on my way here, I'm getting a little off script. Bill's probably going to kill me, but it's okay. But if in the Webster dictionary, if there could be names put next to the words humble, passionate, dedicated, submission, committed, your name would be there, Frank, because it has been phenomenal. Aside from the importance of the program itself and the benefits derived for the students, Frank was the driving force behind the program's success. The one on run relationships that he was able to develop and maintain with volunteers who came from various backgrounds was truly remarkable. I'm sure if I was to ask all of you, if you had a mentor that has continued to guide you through your young age and even through adulthood, I've been blessed. I I don't know if you know, but Bill Buliam is here from Rome Chamber, an executive for over forty years. But this mentoring program started out as a much smaller group, yet year after year, Frank, with your perseverance, you were able to increase volunteer participation and involve more students. The way he recruited volunteer support from certain employers and various organizations was really quite impressive. Remunerating the volunteers with the program, responding to their concerns and organizing them into a unified group could not have been an easy task. But clearly for you, Frank, it was a huge commitment on your part and you did it magnificently and you are a very humble person. You laid a strong foundation for the continuation of the program and it is our hope, obviously with COVID, that the program does continue. So on behalf of the Rome Chamber, I have a certificate that I would like to present to you. Congratulations to Frank P. DiBardino III. Grateful recognition of your exceptional leadership and proposal establishment of the Rome Mentoring Program, which grew from three to all seven elementary schools in a four-year period. And from his successful efforts in recruiting and organizing more than two hundred community volunteers into a cohesive group that established meaningful connections with the Rome students. So on behalf of the Rome Chamber, congratulations, Frank.
Thank you.
Sure, sure. Go ahead, say a few words.
Sure.
The mentoring program that was established four years ago in partnership with the New York State Mentoring Program and the Rome Area Chamber of Commerce would not have been possible without the support of our superintendent Peter Blake and Amanda Jones, our director of counseling services here and all of the number of organizations of the Rome Area Chamber of Commerce, both Bill and Debbie have worked incredibly many, many hours over the last four years to retain businesses such as the the Eastern Air Defense Sector and the Air Force Research Laboratory who provided mentors for our program. We also had a wonderful group of site coordinators, faculty members of each of the seven schools that oversaw the weekly mentoring sessions during the course of the school year. We're talking about children who need a little extra push. Those who lack self-confidence, those who may have some socialization challenges. These are the ones who without the help would not be able to continue. Fourth, fifth and sixth graders, you would not, you would not believe the transformation after being paired with mentors. Many of the children stayed in the program for the three years that they were in elementary school, fourth grades, four, five and six. And many of our mentors were here for four years. During the four years of the program, they loved it so much. The connections and the bonds that were made were would be long lasting and the impact on the kids is remarkable. And I think it's a testimony to the site coordinators, the principals who supported the program, and of course, the administrators, Peter, Amanda, for their diligent work as well as the chamber for encouraging businesses to take merit. So I thank you for this recognition, but it really is something that we have to recognize the chamber and the school district for its work. And I do have one bit of good news to report today. The New York State Mentoring Program will continue operating under the new administration. So down the road at post COVID, Peter, as you're saying, we can't plan anything definitively. But once post COVID is behind us, once we're able to re-group, we'd be happy to work with you again with the mentoring program in whatever schools you'd like to do. And so hopefully we'll stay in touch and get the program rolling again. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you. We have a, we have a certificate for you and shake hands, please, sir. Right over here, Charlie, Mr. Fred.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
There you go, sir.
That's great.
Hardware today.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, at this time in the meeting, you will open all the comments. You wish to speak, and if not already done, so please. Please comment, Chris, and Mr. Frank. This is an opportunity to appear before the school board and express your use of certain agenda items and do a district affairs. Where is it you limit your remarks to five minutes? A public speaker are asked to refrain from making personal attacks for district employees and elected officials. You advise that your comments do not enjoy the same privilege and immunity of statements made by members of the Rome Board of Education. That the famatory or obscene statements are prohibited. Please note that unless specifically indicated on the agenda, this time it's not a question and answer period. There's no exchange of conversation with the members of the board or executive staff. However, if your comments require a response, every effort will be made to respond to inquiry in a reasonable timeframe. Thank you for your preparation. And our first speaker is Steve Hampi, Mr. Hampi.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. It's been a while since I've been in this room, and I think most of you know that because I've been a parent attending my children's activities and it is the importance of recent events that finally bring me before you today. I would like to renew my, my strong desire that the lack of transparency of this board be ended. As the vice president often likes to say, previous administrations left you with the ask the BOE email. You've chosen not to use that as a conduit to public comment. Previous administrations had to adjust to streamed meetings because of COVID that had open chats. You've decided to stop doing that. The governor in September signed a law that extended the COVID exemptions to the public meeting law that incorporate streaming of public meetings. For some reason, that's not being adopted. It has played out in the most recent redistricting meeting, which quite frankly really was one of the most bizarre meetings I've ever attended in the city of Rome. The fact that you were not able to find a way to allow for distant participation is quite frankly distressing. But that brings us to the most pressing issue, how the handling of the AGG consultant contract was summarily ended in a three-minute discussion before the board. That a board member would actually claim that the fact that Rome is only eighteen percent non-white should be a factor and whether diversity, equity and inclusion is a priority of the Rome City School District is reprehensible. I'm here to tell you that I have personal knowledge of an incident at Stroud just a month ago where a swastika was stomped into the snow when other students obliterated it, it was then replaced with KKK stomped in the snow. I have information that RFA history teachers are constantly being required to back down false information because they're trying to present factual information about history. Both RFA and Stroud students have reported that they're being mocked to constantly repeat their pronouns. This is not about being non-white. This is about what's right for the community, the entire community. It was offered that you're acting as stewards of education. It does not seem to be that is a priority when something like this was left to fall. The presumption that was offered that there was an alternative that you wanted to hire somebody in-house and run it from inside, where's your nominee? Where are the candidates? It was mentioned that prior discussions that occurred that the current consultant would be allowed to finish their term and their performance would be reconsidered at the end of the school year. Why did that not take precedent over a vote with three minutes of debate? You debated for almost twenty minutes the preceding item for an IT contract. Why was diversity given much less attention? Bottom line, and I say this to the new members, Mr. Freddie, Ms. Reddick, Ms. Megaril. The loudest voice is not always the one that needs the most attention. There are students in the district right now who are facing hardship and having an external diversity consultant, which as Mr. Blake has pointed out, Rome was a pilot and a model for the rest of the state. Now we're just falling behind the crowd. It's time to back that up and make this a priority and not just another committee that's hidden behind the multitude of meetings that you now have. The public needs to be heard on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hampi. My next speaker is Jackie Nelson.
I like the way you say it, Mr. Nash. You know, I was just sitting here thinking, if you don't mind, I'm gonna stay in my seat.
It's okay.
I'm sure.
We can hear you.
I know you can. I was just thinking that I look forward to the day when I can walk around this room and shake all of your hands. I, as Mr. Hampi said, the community, the overlooked, the underrepresented community is very upset about what happened at this board meeting a couple of weeks ago. So I just wanted to just ask a couple of questions. You could email me the answers if you please. So some in regards to AGG, some of you stated, and I'm going to point out comments that came from the vice president because honestly, and I think we all could agree, she is the loudest voice on this board. Some of you, the reasons for letting AGG go was the cost. You even went so far as to point out in a meeting that there was only eighteen percent of non-white students.
Not what I said.
Some of us are wondering why that that's an issue at all. Why, why would that even come up? What difference does it make how many students are black, how many students are white, how many students are whatever? You're concerned about the cost and the low number of non-white students. So are you saying there are not enough non-white students to be fiscally responsible? I would also like to inquire about finding funding. Why doesn't the district reach out to our state officials, local officials, if, you know, coming up with the rest of the money to pay AGG is the big issue here? Then maybe we can find the funding somewhere out so they can finish their work, be reevaluated in June, and then we could see where we are instead of ending everything right now. I reached out to our state officials, we're waiting an answer. So surely, um, that's one of the things that you could do. My other understanding was also that there was grants available to to pay for this. You guys can correct me on that. So those that voted no, they stated that they saw no movement. I'm wondering if you guys are all such experts in diversity, equity, inclusion, why didn't you all offer your assistance prior to the vote and maybe come up with something else? And at a pass board meeting, there was a group of consultants, which I'm guessing there's another group here that you guys are going to decide on paying money for something. Why can't equity and inclusion and diversity be just as important? That's all we're asking. Just make it just as important as everything else. And finally, I want to, you know what, I'm not even going to say that because, so to all of you, um, this, this work was so important and I can't emphasize that enough. And I just don't understand why all of you don't see what was happening, what changes were being made in the school district, why everybody took a, you guys took a blind eye to it and you just make people feel that they just don't matter. So I want to say to, to, to Mr. Blake, um, I know you take a lot of hits. God knows you've taken a lot of hits for me. But I want to thank you for what you trying to do within the school district and for the, the the good trouble that you may have gotten into. I want to thank you for that. And to Amanda Jones and to Chris Brewer, um, you have the best administrators, administration that I, a lifelong, lifelong Roman have ever seen that you put kids first, no matter what they look like or where they come from. So thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. I just want to say one thing right now. Reflecting about transparency, just sort of pop of notes that this contract with AGG was approved twice before was incorporated twice before without the board's approval. So there was no transparency there in past years. Our next speaker is Rob Wood.
Crazy that you were behind the screen, Rob. I didn't even know you were.
I want to segue a couple of things. One is there's a lot of things that are behind the scene that have been discussed and and in the works based on the previous speaker's comments, and it was very important work and change is always slow. But the hope would be that we can get the partners back to. But the hope would be that we can get the partners back together and make movements because our children need it. And the mission here is to do no harm. And said, reality is there are people out there who are struggling and need to be tended to. So, so thanks as we regroup, build up and take things forward because we need to, whatever those actions happen to be moving forward. I also wanted to ask a procedural question and the scenario would be in May. So in May, a budget is proposed by this board. It goes to the city for voting and then the city votes. And so the expected, let's assume that it's approved by the public. So two questions. If our, our public approves what you've put forth as a, an upcoming school year budget, number one, is it required that the board votes them to approve what the city has approved? And secondly, can this board vote no to what the community has recently approved from which you have presented to the community as a budget? A procedural set of questions.
You don't budget for.
The board, that's the budget, then it goes up to public vote.
Right. So we wouldn't say no if we said, if we said yes, put it on the ballot. We've already said.
And the voters approve it. That's it.
Okay. So the second piece they could, so you cannot vote on it. First segment. Is there a reason to bring it to a vote by the board? Because that's from the practice that I've witnessed.
I think you have to, my add-on.
The budget, the annual budget, Rob?
Once it's approved by the public, it comes to the board and my recollection is it comes forth and instead voted upon by the board.
The board approves the results of the election. And then in August, they certify the tax rate. So after the voters approve or disapprove the budget in May, the next legal steps for the board would be to accept the results of the election, like all the election, which is also the budget vote. And then the tax levy rate is set by the board in August.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rob. And our last speaker is Rita Ruiz.
Hello, everybody. What's everybody doing? Well, tonight my comments are obviously about the Access Global Group as well. Yeah. So we heard the board say that they wanted someone in-house. And basically, if we had someone qualified, then why weren't they used before? And actually, I want to say first, before I get into, I just want to comment back that, you know, it doesn't matter what's happened over the past two years, ten years, twenty years. The time is now. So regardless if there was transparency before, we're talking about now, the present. And just let me get that out of the way before I forget. So again, if we had someone qualified, why weren't they used before? And why is there such a resistance to have someone come in and properly audit what's going on? Just like you would do if you needed your financial records reviewed or oversight. I would hire a professional, someone who is educated and capable. And we have that with Access Global Group, an organization with much more experience and knowledge than anyone in-house. Using the term person of our own kind, one of our own, is pretty much saying that you know, we don't want anybody else in our business. We want to keep it in here. An individual can have many traits and almost infinite number of qualities that make them different from others. But those traits and qualities can exist in other people, just in different combinations and intensities. And to quote intention, as told by Chris Scidicoulson and Lynn Turner, anti-racism is a way of life. Like starting any new habit, anti-racism requires a conscious decision to pursue it as a goal and a way of being. Intention brings mindful presence and awareness to what we say and what we do. Specifically, many of us want to know, why was the contract really canceled? Was it a contract issue? Was it performance-based? Were there any specific items in the contract that call for objectionable actions? And if so, what were they? Is it a policy change? I personally do not understand how three people, Tanya Davis, Mr. Nash, and the board clerk, Ms. Montana, can put a stop to this program. Three people put a stop to this program. To the board members who say that they haven't seen results, I will say there's not enough time. They have a true quantifiable results or a proper logistical analysis. Though we have heard comments that milestones were hit. There's just not enough time. Not going to get, you're not even going to get a trend line out of that. So I'd like to request that the contract be available for the citizens of Rome, New York, and the parents of the students who attend this school. Also being robbed of the opportunity to fully gain the benefits of this program. Is there something there that we should know about? What decisions can be made? And does the dissultment of this contract warrant one party or the other does it take two parties in agreement? Please save us the time and aggravation of filing a FOIA Freedom of Information Act and make this document public, available for the public. Yesterday on a radio show, a well-known Roman insisted that the reason this program was canceled was because people did not want their tax dollars spent on this. Did you ask them? If we get a specific vote on this, the actual public, whose children are going to these schools? That was the first words of my fellow resistor sister. How much is our children's equality worth to you? Speaking for myself, I don't know any parent, especially parents whose children attend this school. Unless they themselves are biased, that would object to a portion of the average that they pay towards this school taxes being spent on this initiative. They surely spend enough on sports, many of which their children do not directly even benefit from. Now, to be an ally is to take on the struggle as if it was your own. It means that you do what is uncomfortable. You are committed to taking a risk, sharing any privilege that you have to center marginalized black and brown people. When you see something, you say something. And you cannot acknowledge or change that which you deny or choose not to see. Thus, the first step towards dismantling racism is breaking through that denial and educating oneself about the history of African-Americans and the black experience. As to quote, if Ibram X. Kendi, thank you very much, and I urge you to again make this contract public to us and give us the real reasons of why three people had the ability to completely dismantle something that was really good. We had a good thing going on. So thank you.
Thanks, Serena. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, we will get into our regular agenda. Please, you need to fill out a card, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, Natalie Williams.
Hi there.
Hi.
I'm regularly working as a substitute teacher mostly at RFA. So hello. And I see the whole district. And so first question, I applied to be a tutor at RFA in the afternoon. I got no response about that. I sent it to various people. I want to know what's going on with that. Number two, much more profound and significant. I also sent emails out to all the important people regarding opportunities for me to get trained as a computer teacher. There are various organizations promoting coding and willing to train teachers and most of the teachers who are already very busy in their subjects are not interested in it. I so happen to be available and personally love to learn to code and actually did some of that in my previous experiences. And would like for the school district at least to say yes. We are interested in being able to have some kind of a program for children to code and it can start with elementary school kids. They've got kids programming robot arms and all kinds of amazing things for, you know, for kids. And certainly there are high school level robotics activities. So there's going to be a need for that. I fully expect that New York State will probably have a computer science license within the five or 10 years. And you could be ahead of the game and have someone in place who's trained for, basically free from these nonprofits right now to be able to do that. And if not have a regular school program, have supplemental programs or a summer training or coding camp in the summers, after-school programs or something like that. So I encourage you to actually read my emails and perhaps respond.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
All right.
Anybody else like to speak before we go to our work study session?
Hey.
All right. Thank you to our, to our construction management team over here. We have two members of La Bella who are architects, Kevin Rodamacher and Justin Schaper. Hopefully you know these folks by now. They've been, we hear from CNS companies as our construction manager and then Christine Prowling from Fiscal Advisors helps the business office here on the financial of our construction project. So you have a copy of the presentation in front of you. Since we're zooming live, we have, we don't have the ability to do both a Zoom live and a presentation. So we're going to use paper to go through it. The presentation will be available on the website and distributed to the community in the next couple of weeks, like you can kind of see what it is that we're looking to do here in March. You, the one big thing, I'll say right off the bat, so we don't have to ask the question, this does not address in any way the issues of daily closing and/or the redistribution of schools to the elementary schools. That will be in a subsequent capital project vote that we are planning in December of 2022 to be coupled with the work being done with Ross, Hager and Associates. So we are, this is too early to be able to provide the community with options or suggestions to address that issue. However, some of the things that they're going to talk about tonight, we don't feel can wait till December to vote and then we'll just be behind a whole other year on getting some work done. So with that, I turn it over to you folks. Thank you for being here tonight. Wherever you want. Right there, stand up. Hop on a table, stand on a chair. Please eat a steak for Christmas.
So super glad to be excited. My name is Justin Schaper. I'm one of the project managers of your current capital projects as well as hopefully the future one. So this is the proposed 2022 capital progress project. And on the second page that you all have, you'll see that we are proposing two options for you all to at some point choose from. So option A and B are somewhat similar. B just drops off one of the items. So we will be targeting all of your buildings except daily and port sand rights as well. So we are looking to upgrade safety and security features at each of your elementary schools, which would be secure vestibules. And we'll kind of walk through some of those concepts as well as some of the building condition survey items that are essentially maintenance items that have somewhat fallen off throughout the years, whether it be mechanical upgrades, exterior machinery, pointing, various items like that that are really beneficial in these capital projects to make sure that your buildings are kept up to date.
I'm sorry, for point of clarification, can you remind us the last time that building condition survey was completed?
Two thousand and fifteen. And I believe your district is up for the next one in 2023.
So it's eight years?
ICD changed their setup. So it used to be every five years, the entire state did them. Now they're trying to go to a more staggered setup. So, you know, different groups of districts are now doing them. You know, started in 2020 and then 2021 is another handful of districts to try and get on a more routine basis instead of the entire state submitting VCSs all at once every five years. So you'll build back onto a five-year cycle as soon as you secure your 2023 VCS.
So that's the standard five years. Okay. That's the standard they're hoping.
Yeah, everyone's getting kind of a weird gap right now because they staggered everyone from the state. Tough to accomplish all of that work. So now.
Since none of us were on the board at that time, how is that something that we would look at or have access to?
So if they are posted on SCD's website, we can certainly send you the link. It's a little bit difficult to find on their website. But you can, you do have access to the entire state's VCS records. So I'm happy to share that with the board this week or next week.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
And I'll, and I'll just clarify that the building condition survey document itself that SCD has that we upload is not terribly informative. It has some information about your buildings, but the more informative piece is the five-year capital plan that we developed. So we actually bring in more detail items into the, the five-year capital plan, which is your working document for preparing future capital projects. Correct. So in 2015, you may or may not know that we were not the district.
I did know that.
Time. So these building condition survey items that we have, will walk through are something that our design team walked through the buildings a few years ago to actually develop and get our eyes on the building and kind of show what we thought was prudent to include in a capital project. Some of these items you may or may not be familiar with because they were actually pushed from the 2019 capital project and kind of held off on. So we are including those in this proposed project now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So the last item you'll see is a multi-use sports complex at Rome Free Academy. And that is being included in both option A and B. And I will walk through the concept for that. Jumping to the next page, you'll see the seven elementary schools that we are slated to provide secure vestibule concepts at with their broken down costs. And later in the presentation, Nate will walk through each of those aspects. So the first building would be Follow Me, the building condition items that we are currently targeting and, you know, we will continue to develop until vote is passed and we will get into further design. Various domestic air and heating valves throughout the building. You really can't ever have enough in these buildings in case there is an issue. Sometimes there's no valves and you have to shut down the entire building to do something. As well as the kitchen makeup, air unit replacement and the main boiler replacements in the building. And to your right, you will see a proposed concept for the secure vestibule and somewhat of a main office reorientation to provide what we kind of call a lockbox in that vestibule to try and, you know, if there is an intruder, a person in that office can lock them into that vestibule. Or they can only exit out to the exterior. So they cannot get in your building if there is an intruder. So a common theme you'll see on here is a window, transaction window where you can present your credential. They can actually see your, see your, see their demeanor and make a decision on whether to further let them in within the main office. So that door into the main office and the second set of doors into the main building are all unlocked. They are on buzzers to be able to open them up when wired. But that's again, because as Justin mentioned, the security barrier.
Isn't Follow Me already configured that way?
It is slightly. I don't believe that they have the transaction window and actual controls from the desk to be able to essentially lock someone into that vestibule.
Okay.
I think the key for, because people might be confused a little bit. All of our buildings have a double set of entry doors. So they have a vestibule. What we're proposing is you do not enter the hallway. You don't enter the vestibule and then into a hallway, you enter the vestibule and have to come to the main office. So nobody gets access to a hallway without going through an office and, and having a physical person put eyes on this, which is different than how our buildings are set up.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Moving over to the next building would be Clock. This building, we are only proposing a secure vestibule and no current building condition survey work, only. This building, we are only proposing a secure vestibule at and no current building condition survey work only because of what Superintendent Blake was saying, that there may be some work that comes out of the redistricting study. And we don't want to be spending money twice on something that's still in potential. Something over to Dancy. Again, like Follow Me, working with Alex, we are looking to add additional isolation valves throughout the building. Kitchen makeup air unit does need replacing. It has its useful life. And some exterior door replacements throughout the buildings. I believe some of them are rusting and starting to fail. Weather seals have gone. So really just trying to replace any damaged ones or ones that are beyond their useful lives. And currently you have a pretty large vestibule at that building. So we may rework this a little bit, but we are proposing a similar style. Jumping over to Gansford. Again, additional valves. Walking through the building, we did notice some cracking in the floor, which is poured terrazzo. So we would propose to address that cracking. It is not structural. Sometimes a concrete slab will crack below slightly, but it is not a structural concern right now. It's more of a weather. Hot water heater replacement in the boiler room as well as the boilers. And the IT closet, to prevent overheating of the servers, we would propose to install what's called a mini split unit. Essentially an isolated air conditioning unit.
I'm sorry to interject with another question, but Gansford was one of, well, okay. That was one of the last ones renovated, right? I'm sorry, trying to remember the order we did these. So when, so I know we did this with most of the other schools. When we renovated Gansford, we did not put in a boiler or hot water heater?
Not to my knowledge.
I was not aware of that. Okay.
And then lastly, the kitchen grease trap replacement. All items usually located outside. Something over to Joy. Again, these are very small items for BCS here, additional isolation valves and at the time when we had met, there was a request to add a new drinking fountain over towards the gymnasium in the corridor. As there is not currently one there for students using the gym. And to the right, as a common theme, you'll see the secure vestibules. These are obviously for further development during design, we would meet with all the building staff at each elementary school to really hone in on, on what they need. So next would be Bridge Mills. Again, like all other buildings, additional isolation valves, there would be some exterior window replacements. As well as it was requested at the time to add an interior storefront partition in the library to divide that space. I'm honestly not sure if that's a current need, but when we had walked through previously, it was requested by the library. And then lastly would be the kitchen makeup air unit again and to add new smoke detectors in any spaces that do not currently have them. Next item, stadium support. This would only be pertaining to the actual building and not the grandstands. Currently, we are assessing the grandstands currently under the phase three project of the in capital project. Or improvements. So interior floor finish replacements. It's basically just old carpet that's laying on the floor loosely. So we would look to replace that as well as providing more isolation valves and to replace the boilers in the basement. And then lastly of your elementary schools would be stoves. Again, we would install a split unit for air conditioning in the server room to prevent any overheating of the equipment. The lockers in the corridor appear to be in somewhat rough shape. So we were proposing to replace those. And to replace any AV units which are orange and strobes for the fire alarms throughout the building. Jumping to Stroud, we are not proposing to do a secure vestibule here, but we would propose to replace a few air handling units as well as the water main replacement as we understand from Alex.
Is there a reason we wouldn't want that same type of us to be all there with it being such a large school?
Well, no, they have it.
No, their office, you have to like go in and down the hall.
I believe at the time we were just trying to target the elementary schools, but it is certainly something that we should look at.
And there were some other, I know when we did our pride walk with Mr. Work, there were a couple of other items, but one of the biggest items that we've been concerned about that was not included in the Stroud project is the stairwells. And I do have to say, you guys did a beautiful job at RFA. I think I mentioned that previously. The new RFA stairwells are much safer and look beautiful. I think that has to be a priority because
Those stairs have been there a long time.
I didn't go to here that long ago. Yes, I did. But yes, I mean, you know, it's like we did all this beautiful twenty five million dollars worth of work and just left those stairwells and they're not safe. So I think that's got to be a priority.
Sure. Yep. We will make sure that's.
Go ahead. So I'm not really certain I'm sold on the, on the vestibule idea. Like what makes you guys think that it's the kids will be the majority of every, if there is a situation, it's usually a child that's coming in already with it on them and a plan to do it. So what makes you think that this is going to work?
Your security is a, is a multi-phase process. So there's many different things that account for overall security. So you're correct in that it doesn't stop that situation. There are other things that can help assist in stopping that situation, which is probably more counseling level, understanding, seeing signs within a student. And that's something that we just simply can't help with, I would say from our perspective. But from a secure vestibule standpoint, that's going to at least contain or develop the single point of entry and have control of that entry for anyone coming to visit, whether it's a student isn't really totally deploying in that situation for anyone coming from outside, an angry parent, any individual that comes in through that. They have to present a credential and you can hit an emergency button and get out there while they're contained. So they don't have direct access into the building from an open vestibule, which is the way it is now.
So we have the double doors though. So why can't the doors just lock and then you have to have somebody open it?
They, they.
It's a lot cheaper doing it like this, but I just don't, I just don't understand. Or why are we talking along the lines about like metal detectors or something like that? Because I'm not I, I feel that we have to worry more about the children walking through the doors with the things on their bodies than we have to parents or things like that, because a lot more kids come into the building. So holding them and containing them and then staring at them, wondering if they have something on them. I don't know. I don't want to offend anybody, but I just don't, I personally do not think.
Yeah, you'd be surprised at how often we deal with adults that show up to buildings trying to take children that don't belong to them or that they're not on the record of as a, as a parent that they should be there. This type of, right now, as you go into an elementary school, you get buzzed in and they let you in, into the hallway blindly. And if you're there to do something like that, we have, you come into a hallway, you know where you're going, you're gone before you can lay eyes on you. This allows us that extra blanket to be able to say, we can see who you are. We can talk to you before we hit the button, let you in. It's not a conversation anybody wants to talk about. I, I understand that, but this is a, a much more comforting way in which that the building can be operated. And to be honest with you, we have this conversation with our secretaries all the time, who are the ones responsible for that doorway. All the time, they're saying, I'm not comfortable with, with having these conversations with the microphone. I can't see the person. I, what if I, what if I let this person, if something bad happens? It's, it's, it's more or less, you hate to say this, but it is more or less a level of comfort that you're doing everything you can to make sure you're preventing something versus rolling the dice a little bit.
I do believe five or six years ago, we had someone buzzed in at Staley and say, they got in the hallway and started yelling at the principal.
Yeah, I mean, it, it.
So it does happen. And I, I think to Peter's point, like I, until you guys explained it of the going into the main office. So I think about how often someone comes in, knew my child forgot their book, or I want to talk to the principal, or I'm bringing something. Instead of them having to go in the main building, they'd only be going to the office, right? So is that the goal? I, I'm trying, I see your point as well. But I wrapping my head around your initial description that.
It's more than just security against a major catastrophic violent incident. It's, it's your general level of comfort of letting people in the building who generally wouldn't be there.
I just hope that it's not trying to be the fix of, of something bigger.
It also allows the ability, the presenting of the credentials, this isn't to see that, that's definitely the person, but many times just run through a scanner to see if there's anything in their background where they shouldn't even be on campus. Or anything that's been filed against them where they shouldn't be there. So that's the first trigger, right? And then obviously they're knowledgeable of them. They can bring them in and have more conversation within the security of the main office versus letting them in the building. And what I'm saying is that it's a part of many different things. There, you know, you have to add in the camera security level, other door security level and other things that we can do to kind of isolate the building in a shooter situation. And I won't get too deep into that where we can kind of legally as long as we have exit access and we'll take a look at that where you can start to control parts of the building. So they can only have access to smaller and smaller pieces. Yeah, so we, we kind of look at all of that from the built environment on our end. And the way that's facilitated within the district, you know, that to you. But, but we, that's just one piece of it. And so it's a start.
Good. I just hope it's, yeah, I just like to know it's a start because this is something that people don't want to talk about until it happens. And I just don't want it to happen. I would like to get, you know, in front of it. So it's very nerve wracking.
As, as we're, since, since we shifted to this piece of the dialogue, I, you know, I sat on the safety committee the other day and I feel like we get consumed with talking about COVID and this, you know, Anna's right, this is an issue that we have to be talking about. But after the most recent terrible incident in our country, a lot of parents had posted or asked about door locks. And if I, you know, the, the barricades for the bottom of doors, if I understand, those are not acceptable to code in New York, is that?
That's correct. Okay, those are illegal. There are options within the door hardware that are perfectly legal.
Okay.
So there's, there's a key, there's a thumb latch, there, you know, there's all electronic lockdown latch. So there are ways to deal with that. So we can discuss that further.
I think RFA has them if you manually lock the door, right? From the inside that locks.
We've redone every lock in the district in the past three years. And if you know, if we want to go a little step further, we haven't gone this far, but the audio enhancement technology I talked about earlier in the month has remote locks where you can hit a button on a lanyard and it locks the door. You can also hit a button and locks every door in the building. So that program has a lot of features to it. We didn't talk about that part of it because we were talking about the tech thing, but if that's stuff that we want to explore, to Kevin's point, there's a lot of stuff out there with door locks and door hardware that's evolving faster than you can be off with it that we can discuss as part of the project after. Yeah, TA notification systems that are available now have lighting coding that's on them that can code out into playgrounds, I guess. But also, but inside the room, it'll identify whether it's a lockdown, lockout, fire alarm, all of that. So there's a lot of systems that are advancing because of these issues that aren't preventative.
Sure. Thank you.
Alright, so jumping over to the next slide, past Stroud is the RFA sports complex. So just running through some of the intended scope here, we would look to include a cross-country running trail through the property at the bottom of the hill. We would be resurfacing the existing tennis courts. Providing a national grass football field. And below there would be an artificial turf, multi-purpose field, which would include softball, baseball and striking and field for the soccer and lacrosse. Also providing obviously parking areas for those sports as well as a five hundred seat features. And then interior of the building, which we would have to do to actually be able to get aid on the exterior work would be replacing the fire alarm system in the entire building. And also exterior masonry through wall flashing. We have done some of that in the previous projects to try to relieve some of the visual leaking around the building. And that kind of stands into the UPM roofing replacement. We did replace a portion of it previously over the pool. We would continue that replacement on all the flat groups. As well as replacing any failing or, you know, exterior window issues. Some of them don't close fully. Some of the old things are racked, which we've seen. So we would replace any problem with those.
Can you tell me how this plan varies from the one that you presented to us in twenty nineteen for this?
The intended scope would be similar. The design of it is slightly different. I believe we were proposing additional scope above the tennis courts previously as well as pretty substantial retaining wall with if they ramps down to the field. Would have to go back and compare to be honest. Since we presented that one, but the intended scope would be similar to what we showed.
I got a question. So you know, we have an issue with the stadium. If down the road some future board decides that they want to modify or move that stadium up to the school. How is the placement of the softball and baseball fields going to affect the ability to put a stadium up there for football? And is there maybe another site? Or have you left room or some consideration for the construction of a, of a new football stadium or?
So this concept does not include that. I think we did look at that previously and the discussion kind of towards redoing the field and track over at Stadium Sport, which as you know, we, we have done previously. The grandstands have not been addressed yet, but like I mentioned, we are starting to look at, you know, what really needs to happen there to either, you know, resurface them, fix them or rebuild them. We haven't come to a resolution there. So in terms of aid, stadium support is technically linked to RFA. RFA was kind of demolished at that site. The state linked that property with Rome Free Academy, the new Rome Free Academy.
So there is capital funding that would be available for the stadium.
Yes.
Cause I, I, I've been under the impression for a long time that there was no capital funding available because there was.
It's very. That's how we just got the turf done, right?
Yeah.
Like they shifted.
Yeah, typically you cross a road, state doesn't fund that anymore. But because it used to be that site, they did link it. So fortunately, yes, it is. The maximum cost allowance, you can do more.
So I apologize. I have, I like Paul Hagerty, like to keep my records. So I have what you guys had, you know, we've seen a couple permutations of this. I'm more focused currently on our instructional needs and our, and our student needs. You know, athletics are, are good and important. My, my kids were all athletes. However, you know, instructional is important to me, but I guess in looking at this, I would respectfully disagree with, with Mr. Malachi. I am of the same position I was in the past, which is, you know, many of our competing schools have something at their middle school and something at their high school. We are constantly competing for space. So were we to make, you know, athletics a priority, which I'm, again, I'm not sure that's my number one focus right now. I don't think it's an either or. So is what you're saying based on the fact that we've now linked the stadium to RFA that they wouldn't provide us with another field? Because I know another conversation had been since we pared back the Stroud project and that did not get the field that was, and track that was initially intended there. There had previously been a conversation about perhaps linking the Turn Road Stadium to Stroud, which might allow us to fund this here because, you know, I think we need both. I think we're, you know, we, we use a grass guy or field also with no, you know, a city park currently.
So generally, the aid that's given to the site is in a contiguous footprint of campus. So it's on the same side as the building that receives building aid at whatever ratio. Whatever that building develops. So generally, if you want to think about it, in an eighty twenty split, around twenty percent is isolated in what's called incidental, which is how site construction happens. It's not considered building instruction. It all sits in that twenty percent pot. So whenever you're assessing doing work at a building, especially long term, so, so RFA, you redevelop that maximum cost allowance, the building aid that the state will give you every five years. So you kind of want to get ahead of the game and put that forward in your progression of work in, in that building. Because you don't have a whole lot to work with and you need to redevelop that, that building and as you progress along. Because you don't have a whole lot to work with and you need to redevelop that that building and you progress along. So you can do much more, uh, you can you can put much more dollar value into your buildings in that same progression than you can outside of the buildings. So um, you're lucky, you, it's very hard to link something now to a a site that's not contiguous with an individual building. You're fortunate that RFA is still that way and should stay that way. You can also spend that money and kind of do whatever you want, as long as it's on the contiguous site. So you can build a stadium, this, what we're showing here, really without fear from the state denying you. Unless you go over the aid limit that's given to you.
And and so, sorry, uh, to respond to the Stroud link. Um, in that previous rendering and concept, we did try to work with the state previously to basically make the argument. That it was so close physically to Stroud that, you know, we thought we could basically reassign Stadium Support to Stroud. Unfortunately, they did not allow that. So, you know, at this point, we are still kind of bound to RFA with Stadium Support. So that's kind of where we landed with maintaining the football stadium over there. And then provide a concept over at the actual RFA property.
Which does not preclude us in future years from potentially putting some type of field at Stroud.
To my knowledge, no.
You mean RFA? No.
No. So he's saying since we could put other types of fields at RFA. But we, the the football field is now linked and I mean, we just put turf down. That's at least a fifteen year.
They're not gonna let you build a football stadium at the current RFA site, given that it just needed a football field at the turn road.
Right, but that doesn't preclude.
Down the road, I think Joe has a different future question. If you build this complex, does it not give you enough space to build a football stadium at RFA? If twenty years from now, they decide to do away with the Turn Road Football Stadium, which is a different conversation, I think, to be had. That if if that's the question, I think they would need some time to go back to the physical space and say, is there a different conceptual drawing necessary? To make sure that they keep space for a football stadium?
Yeah, that's. I don't want in fifteen years for them to have to move the baseball and softball field so that they can put the football field there, is what I'm saying.
Oh, I definitely don't either, but I definitely think we also have to talk about the fact that we we would need another football field at some point. I don't think it would be, we need something else for football.
Well, yeah, and then logistically, right now, I mean, there's a lot of nostalgia tied to the field now. And I know now that we have turf there, you know, we're kind of bound to it for a while. But but I think nostalgia is what kind of kept us there. Uh, but I don't know that that nostalgia is going to be the same situation ten fifteen years down the road. Because logistically, it's still a nightmare. I mean, there's parking issues and getting in and out of the stadium. It's crazy. Um, and 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 I think if we put it up, that the, I think if the the public opinion was that it should be moved closer to RFA. I just want to make sure that we're not digging up this field that we're building now so that we can put it in the football field and then move the state, the the baseball field somewhere else. So I mean, I mean, it kind of looks like there is that you're you're sort of implementing a field there. But it's, there's a lot of overlap and it doesn't seem like it would be uh, an optimal design for.
Can you just clarify, we own the property, this piece of property behind the tennis courts adjacent to the train tracks? Behind the D P W building, correct? We still own that field?
Yes.
So all that space?
No, this space.
No, I don't. What is this here? That's wasteland. That's wasteland. Yes, can't be used.
So I I think we likely do have a physical space for a a football field. Um, I mean, we are showing the natural grass one here, maybe as a practice field. Uh, I guess it would be maybe more of a conversation of if we needed a track here as well. If we did not, then I think we probably could squeeze a a stadium in for football with grandstands. Um, once we start to talk about either a secondary lane track, then we may not have, you know. The space with the softball and football field, but you may not need two tracks either.
Well, I'm thinking that if you're gonna move everything up there, you're gonna.
Yeah.
So we'll we'll play around with an overlay and see what can fit so that we will sort of master plan that option and see what that means now. If we were to kind of fit that infrastructure in in the right.
Peter, is this where you were just talking about? So this old plan put this one field way over here. Is that where you were just talking about?
Uh, actually, more closer to the train tracks. We own all that space, law tracks. There's a lot.
Right, but we came around and that's what made room for this all being here two plans ago.
The softball complex, but as it works, yes, when we originally talked about moving the stadium.
And now, you know, two years further in, I think, to Joe's point about the traffic that we have at Turn Road. You're gonna have a whole different traffic pattern now at RFA because you're adding two hundred single family homes over the next five to ten years. I mean, they've already started. So obviously, n- nothing is in a vacuum. So we have to, you know, new things have happened since the last time we talked about this. But again, I. All of this is good and all of this is important, but I also think that we haven't talked about instructional needs or any other. You know, I know we're doing the E P C stuff at RFA, but until I see that building condition survey, I don't. I don't know what else we might be missing that we. Maybe should talk about.
Well, I think a lot of it's on the background until we. I think it's on their mind and. Conversation tonight.
I just worry about how close we go to that five-year threshold, right?
This is a really complicated site, as I I I know you're aware.
Yeah.
You've got, you've got major differences in elevation. You've got a wet land off to the right. You've got a major flow along those railroad tracks, I mean. And and you've got really limited accessibility until they open up something, you know. We do own a, the property that links between this site and uh, and Bellamy. That does belong to the the school. There is a strip of property that parallels the the cemeteries that goes over there that would offer. And the other thing is, on the other side of the school, out where the quote bus loop is, it's quite a bit of property out there that you could probably do something with. If you were going to just put some senior thing in there, like if you were going to build a quote stadium, which, you know, we're not planning on doing in the near future. But there is property up there and that's much more easy to develop because it's flat. I mean. Just to put this in here, I I can't believe. You ever walk at the elevations are unbelievable. I mean, you're like walking on the edge of a cliff and now you're gonna kind of. Went to that and create a.
Yes, or our previous, that's why our previous presidents had a lot of ramp ramping, or if we are aware of that, now we have parking immediately there. So we've we've taken that grading into account, which is why the field is positioned where it is currently.
Yeah, but that's not much parking.
Understood.
What if this is piecemeal? Like what if, I I guess, you know, because we haven't even gotten to the numbers yet. You know, so point of, we we clearly know the tennis courts are an issue that hasn't, that's something that has, you know, we have, that hasn't been addressed. Um, cross-country track, obviously, that's an issue because now we've lost daily and I I believe there was damage to a good portion of that, like. The number on this is a lot for the public who didn't get to preview this as the board did with our agenda. Um. Is this something that we have to do in what, both Plan A and Plan B are like, this is a given, the other things are negotiable. Where to me, again, I was, our instructional priorities have to be the top and the incidentals, the eighty twenty, right? So for both of these to be like, bang, we're gonna. I I want to know that it's going to be palatable and acceptable as a tax burden and a and a change for our community as as well. So i- is it something we have to do all of it or is there a an A B of phasing this?
You could redo the tennis courts anytime.
Can you be?
You could put a cross-country track in there.
Can there be an option C that does not include this thirteen, the the sports complex in its entirety?
Sure. There can be any option, but you're just delaying things that you need. I, what I would ask is, I'm kind of, I'm just curious, what what is? You keep saying instructional priorities. What is it? What is your vision of an instructional capital priority? Because most capital work done in schools does not really have any instructional component to it.
Well, the concern is that we are talking about, I believe this was sixteen million dollars. And we do know that a redistricting is going to come. And so when you ask for a significant tax increase.
We we don't have to ask for a tax increase. We have capital reserve. And we have FEMA looking to cover the cost of the next project.
And I guess that's.
Scenario for that.
And and that's where I am on this. And I have to agree with Karen. I I just don't know that this, all of this at once. Given how much else we have to think about, it's been a lot to wrap our heads around, right? We did not know we were going to lose a whole building and be under so much pressure to have to put our energy there to be in the midst of this. And there's a manpower component to that, too, to people in our district who have to be overseeing certain projects. So, you know, that's it's a lot. It's, that's a lot to digest.
The quick answer is that this is intentionally devoid of a lot of that interior space because of the redistricting, redistricting process. And the large project that's going to be required to deal with all of that student population move. So that future project will really deal with that. Secure vestibules still working or needed at these buildings, which is why they were included. Again, strategizing to have um, incidental outside cycle done as much as you can in any project as you do them. Is important for for the long term for the district to receive aid. Um, and then the instructional piece, we'll certainly be sitting down and having all sorts of focus group meetings with how to make those teaching spaces correct. And appropriate for today's teaching when that project comes around with the redistricting.
And I would just add that this project is really developed out of the twenty nineteen product, a larger ninety million dollar scope. That we presented initially.
Right.
To get to the fourteen million dollar December nineteen referendum, right? So there's a lot of. This work that was included in that ninety million dollars and instead of going out with ninety million, we went with fourteen. And now we're either another seventeen or another twenty, but the interior renovation piece is the balance of that. That ninety million that we initially presented.
However, it's all, you know, it's 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 been, and and rightly so, I think it's been focused on correcting awful lot of issues with the RFA complex. And and that's good. And we've got more to correct, but you know. Speaking for myself, looking forward, I think our number one. Objective, speaking to instructional priorities, is to figure out what we're doing, the needs of our elementary schools and how do we get there? And I think, I think pushing the redistricting stuff off into the sunset is not the way to do it. I think, I think, I think we should know whether, how significant our issues are at the elementary school before we do that. I personally don't know that, but you know, we've got a glimpse of it. And that's, that's a very complex problem, but it's one that's worth addressing and it's in it and it's complex because. As you know, you know, we've got this, this uh, diverse group of buildings that we're working with. And, you know, in a very large district area wise. And right now, we're struggling to provide adequate busing for our students, you know, to these buildings. And and so we've got to figure out some ways of of making that work, you know, hopefully the busing will get better, but not totally and. That's.
And I know.
That's the realities of what's going on in the day to day. I, you know, I got a call from somebody today that was, you know, I read about the fact that they had to write their weight through three. Um, light changes at Ridge Mills because of all the stacking up of the of the parents, you know, queuing up to pick up their students at the. At three o'clock in the afternoon and that happened to the couple of the schools, you know, and and there's no way around it. I mean, the the schools that, that's a very congested area. You can't make that, you know, you can't change that. But we're talking about a lot of stuff that's in that regard. You're you're talking about doing, especially your work, that's, it involves all the buildings. It would be great if, instead of putting, well, in addition to vestibules, maybe we're adding rooms to those buildings. To get us, get us buildings that work for whatever configuration we're looking at.
And that is something we're looking at because there is a redistricting going on. So we're letting that process kind of.
Yeah.
Finish up so we can take that data and show you, present to you what that would look like if potential projects moving forward. And we're always looking at site circulation, certainly improving safety with parent drop off and bus drop off. And what we can do, because sometimes rethinking it from the way it works today, you can fix a lot of woes. You can't always fix everything, but we're always looking at that. And and we're certainly not pushing it off into the sunset. We're pushing it off past, just past this project is is kind of what we're talking about, but.
But this project is several years out there. I mean, I I'm thinking that, you know.
Every project is going to be a four to five year process. That's the point. I mean, you you've got stuff here that we know needs to be done. You guys thought that would be nice to be done to provide for the community and the students. The longer you wait on any of it, a- as you see, if this gets voted in March, you're looking at twenty twenty six before you're do, you're finished with any of it. So it doesn't matter when you start your project, you're looking at a four to five year process uh, from beginning to end. When it comes to evoke to actually using the facilities. We just don't, you don't, we don't have the information about the elementary schools right now. It would be, we can provide you with options and ideas. But until we know what the redistricting study is going to bring, all of that stuff would just be potentially unnecessary work. Because the configurations could change greatly what you need to do with your elementary schools.
But I think for our seven, seven twelve buildings, I mean, again, I cannot commend you enough, Tracy, for when we had our pride walk, you were very thorough. You've covered facilities, you've covered instruction, you you've covered safety. I mean, you've covered so much for us. I don't know that we know the same about RFA. So um, you know, harder to look at Stroud because we, it's the most recent construction project, but there's still outstanding things there. I don't know that I still know what a wish list or a need list is for RFA beyond the E P C work that we're doing. So it's hard to, it feels a little cart and horse to me, maybe now because two years later from the last time you guys presented for me personally. I have a better understanding of that. So I just want to make sure that we're not going to say yes to a phase one here when we should be looking at some space needs. Like I know, I I've had, I mean, my eighth year of having kids at RFA, the cafeterias are a disaster. There's not enough room for kids. You know, that's a big problem. I know a few years ago, there was a science lab conversation, like, I don't know. I don't think we as a board know. If there are other things and that building condition survey is twenty fifteen, did you cover everything in this last? Yes, that we said in twenty nineteen that came out of that report or is there still a list of stuff waiting like? Trying to resolve that.
I would say there's always a list of stuff waiting.
Exactly, just like being a homeowner, right? There's always something.
So what we like, we try and do is absolutely plan the next two projects at a minimum. And everything else kind of dumps to a third project, which is kind of the dumping ground for stuff you either can't handle financially or can be pushed down the road because it has some life left in it. So I would say this is project one and project two is that redistricting and dealing with those learning environments and taking control of those. And having those really deep conversations, which will take some time. Um, I guess sort of the planning that's in here is really just pretty clean, straightforward. We need a new boiler, you need to get these valves in the building to to make sure you can't shut down the the whole building while you're trying to repair one week. You know, that type of thing is is gonna be required regardless. So you're kind of ultimately kind of building escalation in there over the years if you push this work, which is fine. You can do, obviously, you can do whatever you want. We'll execute what you want, but I don't think we're there totally for the conversation. We can talk about instructional spaces of how we can improve, absolutely. But doesn't make sense to be part of this project without knowing what's happening with redistricting. Because it might change how we utilize each building. What rooms are we dealing with with that redistricting? So gray levels, things like that.
Oh, without doubt.
So so we do get deep into that and we'll have a lot of focus group meetings, a lot of trace and understanding of how to hopefully make those spaces better. In the very near future.
Okay.
I don't sense that there's a divided focus here. I think that you guys can walk and shoot down at the same time, if it comes to two different projects here. So I I we wouldn't hire you if you can handle multiple projects at the same time, so.
There's some of my issues, my issues. I still know the sports complex. I I can't get that in my head that it's going to cause the taxpayers absolutely nothing. At all to hear the sports complex. I just don't see the great need for it right now. I understand the need for the other stuff. It's, I'm not debating that. I'm just, I can't see the need for the sports complex. It just.
Karen, I'll counterpoint that. As an educator, we're both educators. I mean, I think, you know, structural spaces are important, but you also, I mean, it's a draw to a community. We're one of the few high schools that's not have a complex at their school. I mean, I go to, I went to V V S and I was like blown away. And to me, you know, if I'm somebody with young kids and they're in that, you know, sports. That might be consideration, especially with all the new housing, having nice facilities, athletic cells. I mean, let's face it, so.
I I.
If we can do what Mr. Blake says without any kind of.
No, I'm asking for the, I'm asking, I'm just, I'm just being prudent for the taxpayers is gonna, because we're gonna have to spend money. To do the redistricting stuff. That's that's a given, I think, because we lost daily. So I'm just trying not to put an extra burden for something we don't absolutely need, except, you know, we absolutely don't need. When we know we're going to need probably a new school or something, adding ambulance, that's going to cost money. Take, we're gonna have to go to the taxpayers and ask them for money for that. There's no doubt there. I just, if you're saying it's not going to cost anything, it's going to be free. We're not gonna have to borrow and I can have to, you know, put a tax levy on it. Then I can say, okay, this is a nice thing to have. Yes, it would look like V V S, I think. But I know if you're telling me that, the the numbers that we came in here didn't say that. this is a nice thing to have, yes, it would look like VVS, I think, but I know if you're telling me that, the, the numbers that we came in here didn't say that. They said it was gonna cost something, that, yes, that's what I'm saying.
The numbers that you have.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that, that's what I'm saying, I just was looking at the numbers I saw here, I'm trying to look out for the taxpayers, that's where, that's where I'm coming from.
I think by covering the financing and the building aid side will hopefully help answer some of those questions.
And, yes, I'm just, I said, that's.
So let me just hit on the, let me just hit on the cost that you see in front of you.
Before you go there, I have a question for Peter. What's your vision of the current
The old RFA sign, so where the baseball field is, they would maintain it as a JV modified field, they'd still be able to use that facility. I mean, we're, the, the issue we have is we're short of both baseball and we had, don't, we don't own a softball field on our property, so we're, we're trying to provide um, our athletes with a chance to perform at a, a field in a stadium that's at this, what we're talking about here is top notch, second to none in the entire region. But the baseball field, we still, that's the only diamond we have at the old RFA site, most school districts will have three or four baseball fields, so that all of their levels are playing, it can play home games at the same time when they have practice fields and you have access.
I'm just curious, why, why, um, the past year the baseball team didn't play in our thing?
I don't know.
They played it.
That was a decision made in a, like, I know that for part of the spring, they were doing some renovation work to replace the clay at the field because the, with the lack of use, the, uh, and the drainage is not good, so I do know the grounds group was working on replacing some of the clay and getting the surface playable, so it was safe. Um, but as far as why they didn't play there, that's a, I don't, that's not my decision.
Well, just, I mean, it's an extra cost that, you know, get money, you know.
We agree, we have noticed that, you know, shoulder seasons are getting longer and, and wetter and therefore fields aren't playable sometimes in the spring and stuff, so that's where a turf multi-purpose really come, becomes helpful. Um, not only for physical education, but also for the sport, so we're hearing that from a lot of districts that have unplayable fields at certain times and they're in the gyms hitting balls and things like that, this kind of resolves that, but it's not my money, that's your decision. That's what we're hearing.
No, and I, I mean, I'd be, to Joe's point, I'd be interested in the compare and contrast of, you know, the prior rendering to this, that, you know, if a grass football field was positioned instead of these overlapping, I don't know, I guess I'm trying to um, you know, that left us with a future if it had to be converted or could be converted, I, I don't know, I, and I don't know cost wise, but I guess my other question to this Peter is the other night when we had the meeting with the directors, I have quite a list here of things that Mike had mentioned uh, for the same reason as John just mentioned, there's some things that we go out and lease accelerate or different spaces and some things he wanted done, um, at stadium support that were on his list, would those have to be capital project items or would those be budget items for next year or both?
Uh, the stuff he's looking to do with the stadium or capital project items for sure.
Okay, so I.
These guys are aware of that, they've had conversations about what he's looking to do with that room.
I like it when everybody's on the same page.
I'm gonna get out of the way real quick, because I know you want to know about the borrowing. Um, basically, the, the A and the B option there, you can see the total cost there, I won't go down each cost by building. Uh, the total estimate, that, that is the project cost, so that's the direct instruction work cost plus the incidental cost that Kevin made reference to earlier, um, so that is the, the total project cost. Um, in the, um, in the direct work cost, there is incidental built in, uh, for design and construction contingencies. Uh, and there also is a factor built in uh, for escalation, which assumes the midpoint of construction to be January of twenty twenty five. Have they answered any questions about the overall cost that I don't want to spend a lot of time there?
On to the financing side. So I'm gonna do just kind of a brief overview of how schools for capital projects are financed and aided, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. So we have some new faces from, since we've been here for a few years, but um, so with a school district capital project just voted and approved by the voters, the state will reimburse building aid at what's called the building aid ratio. So the district's building aid ratio is ninety eight percent. So that means that every dollar that you spend that is aidable work will be reimbursed at ninety eight percent. So that's phenomenal, we want to make sure we take advantage of that as much as possible. The state further says, we'll reimburse you the ninety percent on all that aidable work, but we're gonna pay it back to you over fifteen years instead of paying it back, you know, current as you're spending the money. So what that does is that brings a revenue stream of a fifteen year revenue stream. So of all that you spend, state will amortize it over fifteen years and reimburse the district. So what that causes is that forces the district to borrow for a capital project. So you have to issue debt with a similar amortization term, so that every year you have debt service or expense, it is then offset by that revenue of the building aid. So debt, your debt service, less your building aid is what the local share. So that's how capital projects work. And unless you have a very large capital reserve where you could pay for a project in cash and full, a borrowing will be required. Um, and there are very few districts that do large projects without borrowing, most of them are downstate on the island. So any, in any event, that's how, that's how it works overall for capital project for financing. So what we do is we look at the scope and we say, okay, here's the scope the district's looking at. What does the aidability of that scope look like? Um, Kevin and Justin spoke earlier about maximum cost allowances, that eighty, twenty percent. So all the money that you're spending to fit within those maximum cost allowances of aidability for the district. Uh, we look at that and then we say, okay, we know what the aid will look like to building aid the revenue back. Now let's build our amortization to debt. And so then we do that, and that's what you're looking at on the cost summary local tax. So for, um, option A, well, for option A, um, the numbers you're looking at assume no use of capital reserve. The district does have a five million dollar capital reserve approved by the voters and there are funds available, should the district want to apply them, and we can talk about that more in a minute. But so for option A, we're looking at the total cost of about seventeen point nine million. We estimate that to be about two hundred and forty one thousand dollars of tax levy each year over fifteen years. That equates to about thirteen dollars and sixty six cents for a hundred thousand dollar full value home, so that's not assessed value, that's full value or market value. And that's about point six eight percent on tax levy. And then below, we show the amortization schedule year by year, what we expect the expense to be, and then the revenue coming in, so you can see how that plays out. Um, because we make assumptions on interest rates because that isn't issued yet and so on. Um, this is a fluid document that we work with the business office on each year updating as a project goes through until it's completed. So that is option A, again, with no capital reserve. The district does have within that five million, you could offset the local share entirely by using capital reserve money, so instead of seeing that two hundred and forty one thousand, it would be where it, uh, it would be down to a zero, so there would be no increase in tax levy. That's something that districts have the option of choosing and decide how they utilize that.
But to your point, that's one year, if I'm looking at this chart, the estimated local share is that, those numbers over the course, so there, there was, I thought that was, I just want to make sure that I understood that correctly, right?
That's an annual expense, so that's two hundred and forty one, that's an average of each year, so year one, the district would build that into the budget and it would stay in the budget each year.
But I just want to make sure that, that was, that point was made clear for the, the public.
Yes.
And what's our, um, for every percent we raise taxes, it's two hundred thousand, so we're talking, it's basically almost a one percent increase per year, the public just needs to know that, that this is not going to be.
Point six eight percent.
Point six eight percent, no, 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 I know, but it's, it's, it's.
It's not, it's not point six eight percent, and then another point six eight percent the next year, it's point six eight percent, and then that stays level for fifteen years.
But it's point six eight percent and then whatever we have to add to make up for, you know, because this last one from twenty nineteen was ninety million dollars and I can't imagine knowing that we've lost a building, we're gonna be that far off, if not more at, at that number.
Personally, I like this, I keep a circle, we have it, it's good, but we probably gonna have to, might have to use it for something that we need for the students to be in a building, so we don't have full filling, so just, I just find that's all.
Excellent, yeah. It, it's, it feels like an impossible situation because if money was no object, we would obviously do everything. But we have to think about the fact that where we are today isn't necessarily where we, we might be in five or ten years and, and we also have to think about how that affects our community, like that's why we're here, so.
And, and another, another piece to keep in mind, and this is a, so this, you're right, this is one piece of the puzzle. And so we work with the business office for multi-year capital project planning. So we look at where you are today, we add on projects that are approved, still ongoing, proposed projects. We say, okay, what does the tax levy look like when we, when we look at all of that? And so as debt retires, that local, local share related to that debt wouldn't be needed anymore because the debt is retired, that capital project is gone. Instead of letting the levy go down when you know you have additional capital needs, that's timing where you want to fill back in another project. So in that capital, then that local share is then applied to the new capital project, still capital project tax levy, if you will, but it's keeping that cycle going without having these big spikes and valleys within your tax rate related, well, overall.
But where, but where those peaks and valleys could come from is to elementary schools. Well, but that's, this is only talking about the tax impact of a capital project. It's not talking about the tax impact of a year when you don't have a good budget and you've got to make sure you can sustain staff.
A hundred percent, right.
So that's a.
Yep, the operating side is, is separate and.
Right.
Another zone, yeah.
Right, we have debt retiring every year, pretty much.
You do, you make principal payments every year, and then as, um, so like we're talking about a fifteen year bond here, so as those bonds hit their final maturity, there might be five hundred thousand dollar drop in your budget.
So theoretically, we might not have any levy whatsoever because there's, have projects that's in the past.
So I, I did, I did look at that and with, with this project, there was, this would be the increase. There wasn't any, when the spiders coming on, there wasn't any local share available to apply. But we do, we look at all of that when we do the, the financing.
But I mean, at some point during this project, there is gonna be something.
Or the next project, you're.
Right.
Right, or the LAR, or the next project that you'll be stating.
Okay, so then if we go to option B, uh, this is the twenty one point six million all in option, I guess I'll call it, so the local share jumps to about two hundred and eighty one thousand. That's about fifteen dollars and ninety six cents per year on a hundred thousand dollar full value home. And it's about point seven nine percent on a tax levy. And again, we show the amortization, all of the other assumptions that we made, they're all the same for the, the scenario. And again, the same, same with this, even though the dollar amount is more, um, the five million capital reserve is still more than cover, still local share, if you chose to use it, and you'd still have a remaining allowance within that capital reserve. If you have five million, yes. Which I believe that is, uh, that is available.
Okay, that, we use current funds before we fund that, and you've got, um, FEMA still, which is looking from our most recent conversations, as I said, it looks like they provide more funding than, than this we anticipated. And you still have, um, our funds with the change in rules to ARPS, that you have to spend it all by September of twenty twenty four, we have a whole year's worth of ARPS we had planned that we can no longer plan for, so we got about four million left in ARPS that if we wanted to, we could, uh, part of this vote would be to establish another capital reserve, a new capital reserve to start funding, simply fully fund the first one, we can't put more, after we take money out, we can't put more money into that, so we need a new capital reserve to try and build that bank back up, so we won't be proposing this stuff if we didn't think financially that this would be something that's feasible along with what we, we anticipate the need to be for the December Staley project. Based on everything that we've heard so far, we feel like we're in pretty good shape for all these items.
Wait, you have a question?
Sure, I'll vote if they, for a March vote, because we.
Yeah, what is our timeline, how about that?
So if we didn't want to target a March vote, uh, we would look to have the actual vote on March twenty second, which would mean that the board would have to adopt the secret resolution, uh, your January twenty seventh meeting. Which we have already developed, our team and the district's council has, uh, developed the secret resolution for it, so you would just have to formally adopt it in January.
And that's based on the drawings that are in here now.
That covers everything, uh, as kind of a worst case scenario in terms of seeker, we would rather include essentially too much than too little. Um, in case any, any scope kind of drops off between now and construction.
Doesn't allow much time to look at modifications for the fields if we decide that we want to.
For a March vote, it does not.
Major, major stuff, right, slight modification, we'll get, we'll start looking at it right now. To see what, if it slides a little bit and then we'll talk with your bond council, see if that is, I think we have found seeker, if it doesn't, no problem.
But, you know, if we, if we weren't calling for, say, stadium lighting and all of a sudden we wanted to have lighting this whole area, then, then that wouldn't be included in the seeker, so that would certainly be a delay. Uh, but as Kevin mentioned, some small changes like that, we could definitely do without a seeker.
Well, I, I, I'm not completely sold on overlapping and where the field is now and all the rest. Oh, I, I just, we just want a little bit more flexibility. I, I, I understand the need for it, because I guess, and we have a lot of programs that are nomadic at this point, and they're not anywhere near any type of school complex. I know, we're renting fields all over the place and I don't think that that's ideal. Uh, so there's definitely a need, but, um, but right now it's just, I, I just, I want there to be that option available for the community. Uh, should some future board want to move everything up.
And now, being said, a huge discussion at the last meeting was we have fixed our turf, but portions of our stadium are unusable, so are you saying that if we don't, like, that we're not in a position right now to address something pertaining to our existing stadium and a field that we want to be actively using? Um, and we won't be able to look at that until next December?
So the grandstands at stadium support, that's who you're referring to?
Grandstand, and clearly, um, Mr. Stanbully came forward to us with some other small items as well.
So there are some funds, uh, remaining from the previous project, the two thousand and nineteen capital improvements project, uh, which we're calling a phase three project, and those funds will be used towards whatever has to take place with those grandstands, so that doesn't require a new vote. Uh, we just have to develop the scope based on, uh, Mike and Peter and everybody's, uh, input for that stadium.
But we have to use what, only the balance that we have left, so I guess my concern is we don't, we, we, we weren't given numbers of can we do what we need to do with what we have left, or do we have to make another consideration, and I think that's important for us to know.
We, at the November, no, at the October update, we shared that balance, so you have roughly two point eight million dollars left in the twenty nineteen capital project. We outlined a, a list of scope items in that report such as additional roof work at RFA, additional flashing work, um, corrections to stadium support. We talked about investigating the, uh, potential of replacing the scoreboard at the stadium.
Speaker system.
Uh, speaker sound system, there was a list in that, uh, I believe it was in the October report.
I probably have it in this folder, but I, 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 I'm not doubting that, I guess my question is I don't even know if it, well, no, it would have been at the point, can we fix what's wrong? There's the wit, the wishlist, yeah, we need a new sound system, I would love a new scoreboard, but there's a need to fix the water problem.
That's. That, that, we're investigating, we've already been out there, actually, and we're coming up with a scope of work, of what that would look like to fix it, so we do have some good information on it that I can't necessarily.
No, that's okay, I just want to know that two point eight million is enough to do all those things that you mentioned and fix the glaring problem that we have, so.
That's what we're trying to figure out, we're trying to make, we're trying to make as much of the scope that we want and need fit into that two point eight million that we have.
Undoubtedly, we have to prioritize that list, so if that's the priority, we can stream money there, you know. We have to take care of all of that, but we're gonna have to make some decisions based on the, the final dollar value and the investigation of all of it. You know, you have to take care of all of that, but we're going to have to make some decisions based on the the final dollar value and the investigation of all the parts and pieces. What the real dollar value is going to be. And then, of course, you're at the mercy of the bidding environment at the time, so we'll certainly have to prioritize that list.
Pass the resolution on the 27th along.
Exactly.
If you want to use any capital reserve, that's got to be decided by that because this will have to be advertised four times. They've got to get that paper by February 7th. We don't hit that deadline.
You can set up a vote for.
I would say I would recommend me, but I think the feeling is if we can get March, they might be able to get the work done.
The reason to go with March is because otherwise you fall so far behind, you lose a whole year. You're talking 2027 to 2028 difference. Use a construction year.
So I'll go back to my first question. Can we have an option C that doesn't include the sports complex? That would address the things I think need to get addressed, but not that that was my original. Is it possible?
Structure.
I still think this we're pushing this. I think 127 is not realistic. That's just my opinion.
Structure of the project can be really beside beyond cost. So so how you how you divvy that up and what you release? Do you want to tell us a bit?
I I don't foresee wanting for something that doesn't include the sports complex. That's just my personal.
I I can be in the minority. I'm just saying I I cite my opinion about.
Want if you want to know what the costs look like, they that I mean essentially, if you look at. If you look at the breakdown of the proposed cost in there and you take out the.
I think it's wonderful.
Great. And so to Joe's question about the overlapping.
Fields and nomadic sports teams.
Those are costs. Still going to incur costs.
I can understand. I can understand. I'm in the minority. I just looking out for the taxpayers and what we have to do in the future. So I can be in the minority. I don't mind.
You know, like I'm not looking out for the taxpayer.
Oh, no, no.
Of course, I'm looking at the taxpayers. There's there's certain projects that we're we're that 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 you talk about where it ignores the taxpayers. You know, so I mean, it's just it's, you know, in this particular in this particular area, I think that we're just in that respect, we disagree. And I think that so a lot of the taxpayers that I talk to, you know, they have children that are playing and they're embarrassed, quite frankly, by the facilities that we have in this district. And it's long overdue that we do something about.
Well, we we can. We don't. To think about trying to be ready for this in a month's time.
They may agree.
Yeah, that's that's. So I feel like.
You consider the what might be lost, then that's going to be.
I don't know how we're going to lose that in two more months. That's I I can't wrap my head around how you lose that in two more months. If we vote in March or we vote in May, we already have been addressed for not doing a good job of our long range fiscal and capital projects planning as a board. This this district, I'm not comfortable with being told you you hey, here is $21 million. Please make a decision in the next 30 days. When I if that was the case, we should have started talking about this in September. Like, and you guys do a beautiful job and you give us a beautiful presentation and and the projects that we've done have been wonderful. It's not a question of that. It's a question of we're not just thinking about doing this project. We, as to Karen's point, have a lot that we have to think about. In summer urgent and summer nice to have. And I don't disagree with you, Craig. And I have been saying, I said in 2019. I think that just like White Spurall and just like VDS, we should have something at our middle school, something at our high school. We need more than one field. We need the space. I don't disagree with that. It's just hard to put my mind around being ready one month from now to say a yes when we still don't know what the next one's going to look like. And to Joe's point, as much as he wants it, he's still not 100% convinced that that one looks the way he wants. And I'm not either. I kind of looking back at the 2019, think that that looked more appropriate. So it does. It's it's I don't understand how we delay Peter saying another two years if we wait two months to vote.
It's just it's just one year increment. So it just depends on how long we have to design. So it takes approximately uh seven to nine months to actually design a property because we have three different phases within the design process before we submit the SED. SED is a complete wild card.
We know.
So so they have their approval process to receive permitting and then receiving permitting. To going through the qualifications of betters, you awarding the betters, them getting their um submittals in, also proving them, them getting their long lead items to start work. So any as it's always better to have more time to get all that in. Otherwise, you might be pushing your bid environment into a space where betters have already bid out work and they're just throwing numbers at the wall. So you don't want to be too late in the bidding season. So that's the reasons we say we want to go earlier if it's possible. And that's the reason it can push a full construction year potentially, depending on how that all unfolds.
Okay, but the reality in this current COVID environment, because I'm in facilities management, is also we could be taking that crap shoot just based on the lack of availability of materials at this point anyway, right? Like, we're in a very unpredictable environment.
Just takes.
Okay, I I we have as a board have to make that decision of doing our due diligence and getting exactly what we want. And making an appropriate fiscal decision, as I also alluded to in a previous contract decision I made. If you are trying to balance your fiscal responsibility to the community with the long range outcome that benefits the most people. You know, it's it's a lot for us to absorb as a board. It's a big balance. And so I think a month is short. But I, you know, you gave us a very nice plan and a lot to think about, so. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys, and Merry Christmas and thank you for the cookies. Thank you for answering all our questions thoroughly.
Getting to the consent agenda now. We're looking to accept the agenda. It's on page 33. Superintendent school, the superintendent be accepted by the Board of Education.
Second.
Sorry, that was mine.
Second by Mr. Freddy. Any discussion? On paper, say hi. No committee report next week, it's the Tuesday, January 11th at 10 a.m. And that's a combined finance. Facilities.
We've had quite a bit of facilities, right? Picking ahead to the the January meeting. I think it would be a good idea for the committee and and the board actually to go back to what we did with Alex at our last meeting where he talked about the progress and what was being done under the energy performance contracts, the various phases and the the initial. I always said the construction improvement uh programs which are which in the case of the first one, the the December 19 program was broken down into three phases. And we just got through talking about the fact that third phase is yet to be completely defined. And then, you know, it's so everybody has a, I think, a better picture of what's transpired, where and how that relates to the various facilities, because there's been a lot of work done in certain buildings and and very little in others. And that's important because we have a lot of buildings, you know, as you as you all know, and and going forward. It's going to really getting critical to looking at at these options in terms of how the building support a given redistricting. You know. And I think I think personally, I think that some of the things that have been proposed could make make our existing building, even though we've lost a lot of space, much more efficient in terms of being able to 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 fill these buildings with students rather than you know, sections that are are either too large or too small. But as across the board, the building isn't up to its capacity, you know, it it potential capacity. If you had, if you could equalize all your all your you just pick a pick a number, I want all my my grade two students to be 20 students or less, those classes. You can do that with what's been proposed. You can't do it, which we with what we currently do, which is six buildings. And, you know, you don't know how many first graders, second graders, and it's a lot of it is is our community. Our community is, and maybe y'all know this, but you know, our community has a lot of rental space. And a lot of people rent properties, homes and whatnot. And the people that rent can move and and shift around pretty pretty readily. And and it's likely that that that's going to happen. So we may have trouble, you know, trying to balance our catchment area. So we've got to have a a system that kind of compensate for that. Right now, we don't have that. And I think, you know, regardless of what we do long term, I think I think the short term answer is to try to address that. And and my biggest problem is I don't know how bad things are in the elementary schools right now.
So if we are, are we still entertaining the possibility of a a January vote? Because if we are, January 18th seems too late to have a facilities meeting. I feel like if we want to continue the conversation of the facilities project that was put in front of us. We should probably consider having a facilities meeting sooner to continue that dialogue specifically for what was just put in front of us. Because, as you said, there are some things of value in that. I know we did talk about two years ago, those vestibules and being a starting point. And as a part of that to also talk about, like, what are the other needs to balance out what we want to?
Yeah, but I don't think you're at the point where you can trade off, you know, things that are being proposed under this second capital improvement plan against what might be done short term relative to accommodating more more students at the elementary. I think they're they're too far apart. You can't. I don't think you can make that.
I I don't think that was. My point is, should we be meeting as a facilities group sooner to discuss the facilities items that were just given to us tonight? Are we are we wanting to to see if we can be ready for something by Janu- January 27th? If so, we have to later in the evening, we're going to talk about the fact that we have some dates that we have to set as a board tonight for numerous items, negotiations coming up, the redistricting ad hoc. Our professional development and our budget shop workshops. So we got a lot and we've got to get on. And I think in executive prior to this, we also talked about something that's already going to come up, that's going to extend our January 13th meeting. So I guess that's where I'm going. I'm not we see it seems like we have a lot to talk about after what was just given to us. Do we or do we not?
That's 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 a good idea, but I I think some of the things that we asked about to do, I don't know. Not necessarily done. And so um so if that's if that's not the case, then it really is kind of pointless to to try to have that discussion so that we squeeze them by the end of January.
Well, you know, they they they've laid out the work that they're proposing under this.
No, but I asked them.
Capital improvement plan.
They didn't indicate that they, you know, in response to some of the concerns that I have, that they they're going to look at the layout and see if things can be done a little differently. So.
Seeker is the key. It doesn't affect seeker. You can do anything you want for the field. You can move anything around after you approve the project. Because they they're the processes, you have to approve seeker so that state ed will acknowledge the and seeker is simply the environmental quality review, make sure that whatever you do is not going to disrupt the environment. After you get the project approved, when they start developing plans and drawing plans for submission, so you don't have 100% totality of the scope.
Okay, so I didn't I guess I didn't.
But you'll have a different, I guarantee you'll have a different render render rendering of this uh probably within the first week of January.
Okay. Well, then if that's the case.
I'm back to Paul's point. I do think we need to look at our catchment areas going into next year because there's there's issues in some of the schools with numbers. And I think, you know, Peter did a great job in getting us going in September, but I think we really need to look at that. Regardless of what what they Ross and his people show us. I mean, I don't think we can go into another school year with the role with the way it is in some of our schools now. We need to look at it.
I agree.
Ross is doing that project.
I mean, he's got a proposal for you that redraws the lines for August, if you would like to see it, that balances as best as you can. But that has.
I'm pretty sure he's working on that because I think he agrees with that point of view.
And I think our bus is a big part of that, you know, whether, you know, can we in the foreseeable future improve our our bus situation? Where we don't have, you know, everybody on a taking an hour bus ride in the morning, you know, elementary schools.
I don't know that I necessarily agreed with his conclusion of the construction of, I guess, it's going to be almost 200 homes. At the Woodhaven project, at the Woodhaven site, and then another 50 plus homes down on Merrick Road are going to have a nominal impact on enrollment. I just find that really hurt.
Along with all the.
Yeah, but what will have an impact on it is is people moving around. There's been a tremendous number of housing sales and and the where people are going to live and who's occupying all these apartments that are being built, including it's a ton of apartments on Merrick Road. Those are really upscale apartment. I got to believe this. I got to believe there's some kids with.
And and that's a discussion for the ad hoc we're going to have, but I I know at first glance, when from the meeting on November 29th, people were not and Ross's last presentation. People were very put off by the banding, but the banding reduces the number of catchment areas, which was the justification for Staley in the past as well, right? No matter where kids moved or it's same, if you're seven through 12 right now, no matter where you move in the district, you stay in the same place. So the more buildings we have, the more potential there is. And maybe my maybe, you know, Craig's children moved and my child didn't, but my child is still affected in that classroom because that that teacher has to spend extra time catching that child up. It changes the dynamic of the classroom whenever kids are transient. So I I know that parents don't love that and and it's it's a drastic, but you know, in the ad hoc, one of the things we're going to be talking about is what are the initial reasons that we felt we needed to do this before even losing Staley? And it was goals for things like less transients, more consistency, better class sizes, more equal demographics across the district. So, you know, making things more equitable and having better horizontal learning experiences instead of at school A, how come the kids are having a science fair and learning this material and getting exposure to this and going on these field trips? And at school C, it's not happening and trying to balance out those opportunities. So there's so much more involved than just we need to build classrooms. It's if where we put those classrooms and how we structure and how that will help us deliver better instructional outcomes for kids. So, you know, it's a lot. It's why we want to do the ad hoc, but I I think, Paul, you're 100% right. There's data that we need. To your point, though, my only reluctance is your kids, just like mine, right? We've lived through a lot of redistricting and shuffling and renovations. So on one hand, I'm very concerned about the load that we have right now, but on the other hand, we just moved kids this September unexpectedly. Now we want to move them again next September. Now we got to think about moving them again when we have a permanent solution. It's scary because we keep doing that and that helps. That makes kids regress too. And on the heels of COVID, these kids need stability and they lose that when we have to move them. So this is I feel it's it feels insurmountable, but we do have to come up with some type of plan.
So are we meeting early on facilities or we're going to leave it on the 18th?
I I. Something on the first week.
What what Peter said about seeker where.
So then just.
And and we can just move the 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 design concepts later. I don't know that there's really a need then.
Okay, so then just keep it on the.
My opinion, so.
We got to approve the seeker.
You have to prove the resolution for the total cost, how you're going to borrow for it, if capital reserves is probably on that same night, be cut and closed, but.
We have to decide right then. We're going to use capital reserve or not.
Yep.
I don't know the world. I think we need a bigger conversation about that. And I think the facilities is the place to have it.
Well, yeah, I agree. So that's why.
So we should meet sooner. It's about the second week in January.
It had to be a committee of the whole, I think.
So you want to go that far out? You feel like? Well, we were going to move that programs right here. So we could do the tons where the ed programs is because we were going to move ed programs to the we're trying to, Chris, our goal is to shift ed programs to be opposite weeks of people off instead of same week. Because right now we have all our committee meetings in one week and it's killing us.
But we really should. I think that's a good idea that, you know, we really should. This should be a meeting. You know, there's no way that we're going to do have a committee meeting and carry the rest of you and.
Okay, so can we have a committee of the whole on? Okay, so can we have a committee of the whole on? January tenth at four thirty and then, um, hold our space on the eighteenth as well for.
Well, when's our first meeting in January?
The thirteenth. Thursday the thirteenth, so Monday the tenth. Yeah, right. So this is the tenth. This is the tenth.
I mean, you want to move.
I will be here. So the, the tenth is irrelevant to you. I can.
Weren't we going to try to meet the fourth or the fifth Karen? And then adjust again and go to the thirty first and the thirty first would put us opposite weeks?
As I said, like I mentioned earlier, I, with what's going on, I think you better do, just because. Of who's presenting and stuff to give her some time to get the stuff together, but it doesn't matter to me, we can move it back. I don't care.
Or the, the twelfth she wanted to do.
Whatever that Wednesday is.
Yeah, twelfth.
The twelfth.
Yeah, but if you wanted the week before, I don't care.
No, that's okay.
That's the educational one we're talking about. So facilities is the tenth, ed committee is the twelfth.
I'm sorry, and talking about finance, Peter, you wanted us to commit tonight. We just skipped over the finance item. Okay, but.
And the board training is Wednesday.
Yes, the tenth, then we can't, the facilities. We do want to do ed programs before we do the budget hearing.
We're trying to do like.
Do you want to do it all in one night?
Yeah, I figured that was going to be.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
That we just, the three of us, we just have to, or four of us, we have to just endure. In one day. Yeah.
All right, here, I'm sorry, one more time. What, what were the, what were the three dates for the retreats?
You guys decided last meeting, it would be the nine, uh, twelve, nineteen, twenty six.
Okay, the pro- okay. The problem with that is, I'm sorry, I, we knew January was going to be packed, but the. There's tentatively already on this calendar, the board governance.
Yes, the board training on the nineteenth was the only night that eight or nine people were available to.
Yes, so.
So that's the nineteenth.
So you can't, how can we do a budget retreat if we have the goal setting?
Well, you can move that data. You can do both on the same night. You can make that part of the budget, the, uh, that can be the.
I, I, I think the goal setting training.
What's the small part of the budget, the, uh, the one that's pretty straightforward and mostly the capital part? It's really a fifteen minute conversation. You don't have much decision making with it. It's all contractually driven.
Okay, so the twelfth. Ed programs at four thirty, budget retreat at five thirty.
At RFA or here?
Oh, here.
Here.
If we do it here, we can zoom, right? Because that's why I couldn't, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then the nineteenth will be the goal workshop and.
Budget two or budget three?
Budget two. So do we want to do, um, we have five thirty to seven thirty. Do you want to do five?
Let's do the budget training after the goal setting.
So also at five thirty?
Yep, just do it all five thirty.
Okay, and then the twenty sixth is budget three. And then committee of the whole January tenth and we're gonna, are we gonna maintain the eighteenth as our next facility, regular facilities meeting? Or is the committee of the whole sufficient? And does that free up another day?
I think if, if we do what we're talking about, we, we won't leave the meeting on the eighth.
Okay, so we can get rid of that one. Okay, and then ed programs, twelfth at four thirty. And then we do have a couple of items for executive. That John Karen and I talked about possibly putting also on the thirteenth, so it would have to be an early meeting. The board has not yet met. To discuss what are items? Has anybody, I hope you've all been reviewing your, uh, contracts. So we, we should have a pre discussion about what we are hoping to come to the table with for Finn. And we have to meet about Peter's evaluation in January. So we were looking at the thirteenth meeting. Like a before and after for those. So plan on that one being a longer.
What date are you talking on?
Our normal board meeting on the thirteenth, those have to be executive session because their contractual matters.
So before, I'll just plan on meeting you guys at five o'clock every night.
I think we talked about four thirty for that one. Four thirty on the thirteenth.
I'm going to quit my job. Just do this full time.
And she would do a quick one, Peter, too, on the, on the, you know, we discussed it exact tonight too, right?
To do, you have, we discussed that it's like tonight, easy.
Okay, while we might be here for the long haul. Okay, um, goal setting. Okay, those were the dates we needed to get. Okay, except that we still have a date for policy, but we're not doing that yet.
Okay, so facilities is at five thirty then?
Four thirty.
Committee of the whole, we want to be PC presentation update and then the architect.
Wait, four thirty, facilities is or five, four thirty?
They've got some updated information.
Yeah. Whatever updated information they can give us by the time, I think we would need them. Okay, and if they could as soon as possible get us that link, link to look at the building condition survey.
They should be in your, your Google too. We've provided them a lot more over the years. We can get them again.
Okay, so the only thing we have not. It, um, set dates for is to redistricting ad hoc, but we'll look at that when we get there. I mean, yeah.
Set of people, that's why we need to know. It's a different set of people. That's why we need to know.
EBC involves two different groups at, at CNS, right? Construction manager, you know, they, and then.
So that would be had facilities.
Let's push the EBC off in February.
Let's just focus on this thing that we have to get done.
Get all that, Abby.
We gotta try to stay focused.
Okay, thank you for entertaining us as we got all those dates straight.
Okay, so.
Yeah, thank you for coming. I'm not going to be in the state that day, so I'm somewhere else.
Okay, so we're going to go right to people operations then, let you get something in.
No, no, we're good.
Okay.
I know better, thank you.
Next item one, resolution to appoint instructional personnel probationary resolved upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, board of education hereby appointing instructional personnel probationary. Sarah Rowe, yes, ECP, teacher assistant, salary seventeen thousand six oh four per rated effective date twelve fourteen twenty twenty one through twelve thirteen twenty twenty five. And with the resolution.
Second.
Senator, Mr. Reddick, any discussion? All favor say aye. Paul's Carrie.
Action item two, resolution to appoint non-instructional personnel probationary resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, board of education hereby appointing non-instructional personnel. Probationary is listed in action item two, page seven of the agenda and move the resolution.
Second.
Senator, Mr. Bowie, any discussion? All favor say aye.
Uh, excellent, three, resolution to appoint extracurricular personnel resolved upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, board of education hereby appointing extracurricular. Extracurricular personnel as listed in action of three, uh, page seven of the agenda and move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Mr. Bowie, any discussion?
I just want to ensure that going forward, um, we did some work in policy and identified and asked all the review policy seventy two oh one. And seventy two oh two, when you look at the contract related to the item. That we just talked about a minute ago, it refers to, I believe, a policy forty six hundred. That is not correct. And in twenty seventeen, they made a change. So the policies pertaining to this are seventy two oh one and seventy two oh two. And we do need to make sure that we are following that policy and that we are getting, um, annual updates. And, um, looking in this, at this in a timely manner for next year. So this should all be handled by June so that. There's no question of what's happening for our kids come September. I also want to say I'm going to abstain on this because I have a, a child involved in one of these organizations, so. I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
And I'll just say I have several reservations on, on some, some of these. Uh, clubs, but, uh. For the benefit of the students, I will be voting for it.
And I, I go with Johnson.
You know.
Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Carrie.
Excellent, four, resolution to appoint winter sports personnel is all that upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, board of education hereby appointing. Cheryl Hegley, um, ticket taker slash ticket seller, salary of fifty dollars an hour, effective date twelve ten twenty one through March one twenty twenty.
I can buy. Mr. Bowie, any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, Carrie.
Excellent, five, resolution to appoint winter coaching personnel is all that upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, board of education hereby appointing winter. Coaching personnel is listed, I actually have five, page eight of the, of the agenda and move the resolution.
Senator, Miss Davis, any discussion? All favor say aye.
Excellent, six, resolution to approve updated job description resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, board of education hereby approves the updated job description. For student sports specialist, I move the resolution.
Second.
Senator, Miss Davis, any discussion?
Did everyone get that amended piece from personnel Monday?
Everybody got? I got it here if anybody wants to look in.
All favor say aye.
Actually, I am seven, resolution to appoint student sports specialist resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, board of education hereby appointing individuals. As student sports specialist, Sarah Fox, R F A and Grady Faulkner at Stroud, both at a salary forty two thousand dollars. And the start date for each, or, or Sarah would be one, three twenty twenty two and sir, Mr. Faulkner would be. January eighteen twenty twenty two and move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Mr. Bowie, any discussion? I personally am happy to, to see these decisions filled and, um, looking for some things. Some out of it.
I have to echo what Mr. Nash is saying. This is the big need for our kids and we're really hoping that this proves to be. A, a positive way to affect our student outcomes.
Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Excellent, item eight, resolution to grant tenure, resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, board of education hereby grants the following individual tenure. Be a company, you know, teacher effective date, January seven twenty twenty two and move the resolution.
Second.
Senator Bowie, any discussion?
I should have thought of this, I wasn't quick enough. For number seven. Was there already thought to invite these, our two new employees to the diversity and equity team, the task force?
It would probably make sense.
I just think.
Particularly since I, I believe that one of these people fulfills Ms. Nelson's request. That we be hiring students who are more representative of our, our staff, who are more representative of our student body, so.
I think we extend an invitation to them to be on the equity task force. I think that.
I think they're definitely going to be reaching the kids that are affected by that.
And it's a good idea.
Excellent, night. Resolution to accept retirements resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, board of education hereby accepts with regret the retirement of the following individuals. Tricia Wheeler, teacher assistant club, effective date June thirty twenty twenty two and Linda Froyo, senior typist at Stroud, effective date eight one twenty twenty two.
Senator Bowie, any discussion?
Congratulations.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, take one, is that a normal thing to, uh?
For twelve month employees, anytime throughout the year, it's normally, usually depends on the anniversary date. Are they sure? I hope so, okay.
I was waiting for the question, Joe.
And for your discretion. Carrie, I want to thank, thank these two ladies for their service.
The action item ten, resolution for creation of skiing team of one. Whereas a ninth grade female student is interested in participating in interschool athletic athletics as an Alpine skiing team of one. And whereas Dennis O'Brien, the Alpine committee chair for New York State Public High School Athletic Association. Has advised the district that it may create a skiing team of one for the student. And whereas Melissa O'Rourke is appropriately certified and qualified and willing to serve as coach of the Alpine skiing team of one. And whereas the board and administration wishes to allow the student participate in skiing as a team of one consistent with the New York. State Public High School Athletic Association rules and requirements. Now, therefore, it is resolved. One, Isabel O'Rourke is designated as a team of one for Alpine skiing under rules for the New York State Public High School Association for the winner. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two season. Two, the Rome City School District shall pay the entry fee for the student's participation as a team of one. Three, Melissa O'Rourke is pointed as coaching, as coach for the student as a skiing team of one. Transportation to and from practices and contests shall be in accordance with board policy. Mrs. O'Rourke expressly waves any claim to compensation for services as a coach of the Alpine skiing team of one. Or in the event the winner Alpine skiing schedule includes competition during the school day, the students have the excuse from attendance, please miss to compete. Mrs. O'Rourke shall be excused from her employment with the district for purposes of coaching the student at competition. Five, the superintendent and flight director or their designated or upwards to take any action necessary to implement this resolution. So I move this resolution. Second.
Senator, Mr. Freddie. Any discussion?
So the transportation to and from practices. How is that going to be accomplished while complying with our policy? Where, I assume that seeing this as a mother and daughter situation, it crushes you a lot to bring her out. And her own vehicle or is there? School district, new vehicle that has to be.
Does the policy indicate that? Because if I want to transport my child, I have to sign a waiver.
Uh, I do not believe for the girls team, it does not for this situation, we would go through any similar process. That we use for the athletic department if the coach was going to transport.
Heard the question. Did we eliminate resolution eleven?
Not yet. That was Joe's request as the people operations committee to have, um, an option. And very often, not knowing if there would be.
I'm going to say that I was in favor of item two, so. That was the discussion during people operations. I know it's, it's a very challenging. Scenario, given, given considerations we've made to trying to create other sports teams, so.
The resolution passes, I wanted, with the young lady, good luck, represent her well. And we hope that this will increase interest from other students to maybe get a more of a team than just one next year.
And, and it should be noted that, uh, there were others people that were, um, contacted to determine, um, their willingness or, or desire to. To be on a competitive ski team. I think the ski club was approached and there was no one that came forward that wanted to participate. And I think that, um, the reason why we had kind of computer resolutions is, is in the event that that someone else did come forward. So.
And my reservation is just the timing on that is, so I, I felt that there might have been kids who would have wanted to. But we are already into the winter sports season. So did we preclude anyone? Would it have made more sense? To participate as part of another team this year and create a team next year to give everyone a fair shake. So I wish you luck. I think it's outstanding what you want to do either way. I can barely stand up on shoes, so you rock on those skis. It's not a personal thing.
No, I hopefully, I, I, it will spark some interest and it will cause some people to say, hey, I didn't realize there's a skiing competition team. And maybe you can put one together. That includes more than one person next year.
We're hoping, yes. And for a discussion? One no. One now.
The lock is about.
To remove action nine and eleven from the agenda in light of the successful.
Second.
Move by Miss. For, for Bowie?
No, I, I move.
He moved it, I seconded, yeah. Yeah, I know what you.
I'm tired.
So we're just, we're gonna strike this from the.
Yeah.
Oh, this one, yeah.
Uh, any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, it is.
Action twelve, resolution to appoint instructional personnel, resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent schools, the board of education hereby appoints following instructional personnel as listed in action nine and twelve, page eleven of the agenda and move the resolution.
Second.
Senator Bowie, any discussion? Good question, are, are we losing a science teacher or are we just?
We did.
We did.
Filling up, uh.
We had a long term.
I bought them, okay.
Yes. I'm sorry, Joe, you moved to that?
Yes, I did.
Any further discussion?
Welcome to the district.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both.
Now, welcome to the district, thank you.
Action thirteen, resolution to appoint interim principal, resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent schools, the board of education hereby appoints the following. Individual as interim principal, Jody Marshone, uh, Club Elementary, eighty eight thousand per rated. From January three twenty twenty two through January, um, sorry, July thirty one twenty twenty two and move the resolution.
Second. Should that say ECP, not elementary?
Because we have soft income classes down there, it's not Club Elementary by the view of the state.
Thanks for the clarification, I did not know that.
Further discussion, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, Carrie.
Congratulations to Jody, she steps up whenever we have a spot that needs to be filled and she is, tends to be very successful, so we appreciate that.
Um, as far as the people operations committee meeting, it's always very. Items that are seemingly always on the, um. Agenda that Jeff is constantly trying to fulfill and deal with. Um, I won't get into all of them, but I, I would just, there were some, uh, questions about the board's first. Situation and that, and I think what we had settled on is that Jeff's going to. Try to marry the job description with the policy criteria so that we can get a posting ready. Uh, and to try to have a, a, a wider discussion as to. What that position's gonna look like in terms of whether it's gonna be part time or full time. Obviously, what the, the salary and, and, and or benefits might look like, so. Uh, that's in the works and we hope to have more clarity on that, uh, at the next meeting and then, um, hopefully we'll get that proposed finalized to the board and, uh, we can. Hopefully have it in place very soon, yes, so. Uh, that was one of the many things that we talked about at a very lengthy meeting the other night, and, uh, so I won't worry with any other details, but. That was the highlight that I wanted to stress and, uh, our next meeting, if anyone's interested in attending, Tuesday, January eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. Malachi. Policy, Mr. Davis.
All right. Action item one, resolution to accept the first reading of policy one four zero zero public complaints. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the first reading of policy one four zero zero public complaints accepted by the board of education, I move the resolution.
Second. Senator Malachi. Question? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, Carrie.
Resolution two. Uh, resolution to accept the first reading of exhibit fourteen hundred dash E public complaints. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the first reading of exhibit one four zero zero E public complaints be accepted by the board of education, I move the resolution.
Second.
Senator Bowie, any discussion?
Peter, I'm sorry, I should have asked this after the first one, I saw that you forwarded these to Courtney, did you get any response or feedback from her?
I have not heard it from her, no.
Okay, so. Double check for the security.
Further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, Carrie.
Uh, item three, resolution to accept the first reading of policy one seven four one homeschool students, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The first reading of policy one seven four one homeschool students be accepted by the board of education, I move the resolution. Second.
Senator McGirl, any discussion?
Uh, I just wanna advise that the policies that we're advancing forward tonight are just part of us continuing in our progression. Um, of. Moving over to the NISP policy service, so we're in the middle. Almost nearing the end of the section one thousands, so, um, these are updating and then we will look to see any that need to be. Eliminated via consent agenda going forward, uh, any updates on board docs?
Everything assigned, they're just working on letting us know when they get the platform set up.
Okay, cause James was supposed to email me back with the date last weekend and I was hoping maybe he told you, so. Our goal is to try to do this by January first and we are tentatively hoping that, um, when we do the professional development that we just scheduled on the nineteenth, that we might be in a position to. Um, include a board docs. Actually, now we're not gonna be able to do that because now we already have two things that night, don't we? Now we have to pick a different date, Patty, we need another doodle, but I don't know if we know how long we need for a board docs training.
Well, we pretty much have a doodle for the entire month of January right now.
I feel like the rest of them were very spotty, but we'll try it.
They all are.
Except for the nineteen.
I thought the eighteenth opened up.
Can, can I, I hate, I hate your good joke, that was good. You're out of town on the seventeenth, right? You're on, you're out of town on the.
Ten, Martin Luther King.
Oh, well, that's why I asked, sometimes, sometimes we have success in doing a PD and a day, there's no school, people.
No, Tanya, I'm taking the day off. No, Tanya.
You get next week off, Anna, no.
Stuff on Saturdays, you're saying.
Saturday. Peter, I don't think so.
That's true.
No, I know, we've done it. I don't care. Yeah, that's true. If that's, if that's.
It's true.
Wait, we shouldn't schedule it if we don't even know when it's gonna be up and running?
They told us that they had gotten all the contracts signed and that they were in the process of building our annual, which is basically taking our old manual.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's the holidays, people are gonna have a lot of time off, I mean, do we know it's gonna be done in Jan?
We told them our target was, we wanted to be up and running in January.
Okay, I know what you told them.
Twenty two, right?
But that doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be so.
We have a break in February, we could do the date before.
Yeah, I think we should do it in February.
Yeah, we can do it on that Thursday, the seventh.
Yeah, February doodle.
Why not?
Yeah, do a doodle February, I think would be.
Doodle February, yeah.
We already got a lot in January.
Okay, and, um, I do wanna put a meeting on the calendar, please don't. Don't throw anything at me. Should I take the eighteenth that? Taken for policy or what? Take the eighteen, cause you will be here?
I'll be here.
The tenth and eleventh then. A tenth and eleventh, you're not, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so Patty, we're just gonna slide into the eighteenth where facilities was.
I'm not really.
Oh, Peter.
Sorry.
It's okay. Um. Never mind.
What about the twentieth, do we have something the twentieth?
No, I can do Thursday the twentieth, can you guys, Thursdays are hard for you, Elena, can you do the twentieth?
Thursdays are hard for me because of this meeting. We don't have one, we have one the week before.
God, I'm not gonna leave you. I'm committing to all these and missing massive all.
This is policy.
Good, I don't care.
Don't worry about that.
Yeah, I say, four thirty?
Four thirty and Thursday the twentieth.
January twentieth. Four thirty, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't care.
Okay, moving on. Explain this business. Resolution to create ad hoc committee. Resolved at the board of education hereby approve the creation of an ad hoc committee for the purpose of redistricting, I move the resolution.
Second.
Senator Freddie. Any discussion?
Really, Joe, damn it.
I'll mention it at the ad hoc committee, which I'd like to be a member of, that's all.
Okay.
After we approve it, then I'll, I'll.
Then we solicit members.
That's fine.
Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolve.
I'd be interested in sharing that, cause I know it's an ass, since you don't want to.
I, you got there, right? I appoint Ms. Ms. Davis to chairman, who would like to be on the thing?
I just wanna go, so Craig.
Malachi.
But if you do them at four thirty, Elena. I'll be on it, too.
Do you know what day?
I don't yet.
Sure, put, put me on it.
Yeah, put me on it, too, and then. We should do it right after a policy.
It's really gonna be a committee of all, just.
Pretty much.
Okay, save a whole calendar, people, does anybody, I'd like to just have a quick meeting. Even if it's just us, to identify what our goals are and an agenda plan for. Um.
Next week is absolutely awful for me.
What, wait, we're talking about meeting next week?
Wait, next week can decide.
It's vacation.
Okay, how about January fourth or fifth?
So what is the purpose of the first meeting this, or?
The purpose of the first meeting is some of the stuff we talked about earlier, part of it is we want to. Make sure that we are staying on track with our goals of redistricting are, so that whatever decisions we make align back to those goals, and we have three new members. Since we brought on the consultant and started this project, so we just wanna make sure we're consistent with that. And that we're gonna check all the boxes by whatever we choose, and then we also wanna talk about how are we gonna structure the remaining meetings, my initial thoughts in talking to John. Um, were, you know, one is ad programs and what are the ad programs, things that we need to make sure we're addressing, like. Um, what do we want our class sizes to be, or what do we, what are we missing? Rooms or things like that, so. First one is really, you know, what are, what are we looking for, what questions you have from that first presentation? And what are our goals?
Why don't we do a brainstorming thing?
January fifth.
Saying you something.
I can't do it.
Want me to start with that, do you guys wanna start with a brainstorming email?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Yes, that sounds better.
Yeah, your thoughts.
Say, your idea, Paul. We also need to, we need to get the first meeting on, or we're never gonna.
So just do it then.
How's the fifth, everybody?
I can't do it.
Yeah. No, you can't.
I can't do it on the fifth, that one's got all counting.
Do we have to have it in January, I mean?
Well, we're gonna have to be making it soon.
Okay.
When you get your first date, please let me know if Ross would like to attend the meeting.
Okay.
The sixth at four thirty?
Oh, I can't do the sixth.
The meeting, I thought the purpose was to kind of discuss some.
Yeah, before we do.
Everything they've already shown you is already different based on everything that they've said.
Oh, okay.
If you're gonna have an antichrist meeting about this, you need to hear from him what they're doing.
Okay.
They changed everything after every round.
How about the third, Monday the third?
I can know, that, no school, or back to school, oh yeah, we could do that. I forgot, I said no school.
Joe can't.
Joe, you can't.
I got trial prep, I can't. Fifth or sixth, where do we go with that, sixth?
Well, Lisa, were you the only one to say? Lisa can't do the sixth, I can't do the fifth.
Ukrainian Christmas Eve, okay, so, I can't.
I should know.
Christmas Eve.
I can't believe that.
I know, and Christmas Day is the seventh, so I can't do that either.
Elena said she's okay, we can do this. Oh, you can do the.
I can't do the fifth, but y'all can do it. Yeah.
Oh, me there.
The fifth, I can do the fifth. And, and we're gonna email to begin with, so, um, all right, the fifth at four thirty, five thirty, what time?
Can we do five?
Yeah, it gives me, so I'll have to take time.
Five, five P M.
From work, okay.
It's gonna be here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
At five.
Doesn't have to be.
Can you go to a restaurant?
Okay. We, we, we've already, that's all.
Nine years, not, nine to nothing, now, ready?
Okay.
Pretty much a video hole.
You're done?
Any old business?
Is there any old business from anybody?
I know, it does say, doesn't it? This is false advertising.
Senator Freddie.
For the purposes of things. Particular.
We're not to come.
Five second. Oh, I thought you moved it.
All favor?
Aye.
Both, okay.
Yep, take like a three minute throwaway.
Yeah.
Double up, and.